Oh, these two, oh, right here, wireless? They're muted in the other.
Okay, so, um, the green one is wireless one, handheld one.
Uh, it's Aaron's sometimes. He usually turns them on as they're coming up and speaking. Uh, I would not turn them on right now.
Hey, get up there. This is your idea. If anybody to blame, it's a... Yeah, just take a... Yeah, can you take a panoramic there, or... Yeah, Rory, I'm like, thanks, everyone. Thanks, ladies, really appreciate it. Alright, the dog was even good.
Thanks for putting up with us. There's, uh, there's some prizes and stuff that come out of this. It can be used for different projects around the city. Helps give us, uh, a little bit of high profile. So, it's seven o'clock. As soon as I get everybody back up here, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. If you plan on speaking tonight, please make sure you fill out a speaker card. We've got a large crowd, we need to be able to kind of time manage here this evening. So, make sure you fill out a speaker card, so we can call you up, okay? Okay, got everybody here? Okay, for record-keeping purposes, make sure you fill out a speakers form. Um, the, um, if you need, uh, hearing assistance or something, you let the city clerk know, they have the machinery over there for you. Uh, so, and, and in, uh, the course of the, um, discussion and the different dialogues, let's give everybody a fair chance, so no booing, no cheering, let, let everybody have a fair time here. Um, just so you know, at nine o'clock, we take a break, because we got old guys up here on the dais, okay? So, we're taking a break at nine o'clock. Um, and, uh, please turn off your cell phones, your mobile devices, and that kind of stuff, so that it's not distracting everybody else. And with that, thank you all for being here this evening, and, uh, city clerk, can you please, uh, well, let's see, we'll do the, uh, pledge of allegiance first, so I'll call the meeting officially to order. Now, we're gonna have a, um, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance, and, um, let's see, Sarge, can I get you to lead us in the pledge? And what we're gonna do is, um, we're also gonna have a moment of silence, and we're gonna do this, um, and give some thought, in whatever manner or fashion that, um, you feel is appropriate, to the, uh, folks in Gilroy, to El Paso, to Dayton. We also lost a very loyal, um, um, gentleman, always here at City Hall, always having something positive to say, always, uh, uh, his criticism was always in the, in the best vein of a positive, uh, how do we make things better for the seniors and the disabled? And you'll notice he's not here tonight, he's normally in that spot right back there, Barry Severs passed away. So, he was that kind of a heavyset guy in a, in a, in a little motorized thing. So, Barry was a good guy. We also lost Commissioner Shannon McDonald, she was a board member of Antelope Valley Partners for Health, on their Board of Directors, and was a Lancaster City Commissioner, and she was just killed. And, uh, Darren Parker, uh, he was a, um, staunch civil rights advocate, uh, and, uh, no matter what side of the aisle you can be on, you can always have respect for one another, and, um, uh, it was a loss to the community when we lost Darren. So, in that, uh, let's keep those folks, and then anybody else, including our troops, on your, uh, on your thoughts here. So, Sarge, can you lead us in the, um, pledge of allegiance, and then we'll do a brief moment of silence after that? Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, um, our first presentation is gonna be with the, uh, Palmdale Animal Care Shelter. You know, folks, we've had a extremely, uh, good streak of luck. Every dog that we've had, and we brought in here and featured with our animal care shelter, we've, uh, managed to get adopted within a matter of a couple of days of having them here. So, this, that shelter is overloaded, we need to get those, uh, those, uh... I, okay, thank you, I forgot that. City clerk, can you call a roll, please? That's why we pay him to. Here.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Proton Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Ben Court? Councilmember Correa?
Here.
Councilmember Loa?
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, you have a...
Motion to refuse.
Councilmember Beckward?
Motion second without opposition, so ordered. Okay, so, animal control. They've been doing a pretty good job here. I wanna keep, I wanna keep it, uh, your wife's not gonna let you take another one, we know that. Uh, this is Jessie. Jessie hails from, uh, my birthplace back in Chicago, but, uh, Jessie is, uh, one of the volunteers over here at the Palmdale Animal Care and Control Center, helps take care of all these, we like to call them our, uh, our homeless dogs, um, and cats, and rabbits, and whatever else, um, that, uh, but this is...
This is Raina. Thank you, sir. She is a altered female, brown brindle, brindle and brown pit bull. She came to us, set straight on the ninth of July, and, uh, she's temporarily housed in kennel fifteen oh two. Raina is, uh... She went through our playgroup, that we have to do for, uh, animals that are thirty-five pounds and over. So, she was a little timid when the runner approached her. Her ears were back, her eyes were concerned, her tail had no wag, and she hesitated to approach the runner. The runner had to step in and leash her, and was able to remove her safely. She pulled on the way to the yard. In the yard, she was stiff-bodied at first, walking slow and looking around. So, she was actually, you know, trying to figure out her surroundings there. She saw the dogs jumping in and out of the pool, and jogging around. When she approached, she allowed the greeting and exchanged smells properly with others. That means that all the animals come up to her and sniff her out, like we come up to each other and shake hands. So... Not to picture I have, but... No. She held her body for them to smell. After the greetings, she walked around the yard relaxed and engaging with any dog that approached her. This dog is okay for public adoption with kids eight years plus, recommended, and large dogs are okay. Her play style is gentle and dainty, social with people, and gets along with other big dogs. Non-reactive to dogs her size. So, she's pretty good with other animals. We still do, um, we'll have to do an assessment with small animals to see how she gets along with smaller animals. She's, um, she pulls a little bit because of excitement to go into the yard, easily to correct, and listens well. Loves to sit beside you, just like she's doing with the mayor, and allows being hugged and petted. Yeah, she's just loving that right now, I don't think we're leaving tonight. Anyway, she's, uh, really good, I had her out today, just checking her out, see if I could bring her with me, and, just like the story says, she pulled all the way out to the yard, but when she was in the yard, she was fine, easy to handle. I took her off-leash, I was able to put the leash back on her real easy, she didn't hesitate to pull away from me. In fact, when I took her out to the animal truck to put her in, to bring her over here, she actually jumped into the truck herself. It was like, that's good, saved my back a little trouble, you know, so, she was easy. She, uh, she let me leash her when we got here, usually they're so excited that they start pushing on the gate, and for me, it's, uh, get a little scared, because they can run away from me that way. But, uh, she, she does really well. Uh, she needs a little bit filling out, she's really skinny, but with a lot more handling and training, she'd be a perfect dog. And a cuddle bug at that. Um, we have, uh, adoption event coming up this weekend, on Sunday, it's at Transplant Brewery, they, uh, offered to give us their space to do an adoption event there, so, it's a poster, uh, the dogs are being discounted for this event, I think, and we are celebrating Pogus. All our animals are discounted, dogs are fifty dollars, cats are ten dollars, and next, uh, weekend, seventeenth, we have Clear the Shelter. So, all our animals, um...
So, keep in mind, shelters are really full, especially after the fourth.
Oh, yeah.
So, let's, uh, let's get these, let's get these guys a forever home, huh?
Fifty dollars for a large dog, for, that includes, sorry. Fifty dollars for a large dog includes the microchip, spay neuter, and vaccinations. You can barely get vaccinations and a microchip for fifty dollars, so this is a fantastic deal, even though you can't put a price on love, you can get a little cheaper, why not?
This is Carrie, uh, and she, uh, also has some information here. If you're interested, and you do adopt a dog during one of these, uh, programs that we're doing, they also have, um, some goodie bags, where you can register, they'll come in, and the city's got something, and I don't know enough about it, so I'm gonna let Carrie tell you about that.
Any dogs that are featured at our, uh, council cute critter, or on our Facebook page, hopefully you're all following, uh, Palmdale Crime Prevention on Facebook, any animals that we feature on our Four-Legged Friday, you're eligible for a gift basket or a gift bag, uh, from the city of Palmdale.
Alright, so, there's a bonus in there for you. So, let's get her adopted, uh, we've, uh, we've been doing pretty good, um, like I say, um, we've probably been averaging, what, uh, two, three days, uh, to get, uh, the dogs we've, uh, brought up here. So, this is important to all of us on the, on the, on the dais, and to many of us in the city, to get, to, uh, get those shelters emptied out, and, um, reduce the kill ratio they have to do in order to have room for the next one coming in. We don't want that, so... Still any newspapers over there?
Oh, yeah.
And if you got newspapers, bring them over there, they, they need newspapers for the, for the kennels, okay? So, you know, and you know where it's at, over there, uh, right near the sheriff station on Sierra Highway, okay? Yes, sir.
So, for those of you who... When you bury, his animals were adopted by a good family in, uh, sorry, one in Mojave, and the other in Adelanto. So, they stayed in the area, and they're both private parties. Sorry.
Yep, thanks, thanks for that. So, Barry, you always saw with, uh, his big old dog, Senior, and then he recently got a, um, a new little chocolate lab, and, uh, and my wife was scared to death that I was bringing that one home, so, she's, every time I do this, she's watching, so, somebody get this dog, because my wife will thank you later, so, okay? Alright, great, we're good? Thank you very much. Okay, if anybody wants to talk, then they'll be around, they'll be outside for a few minutes here, okay? Thanks. That's okay, yeah, go ahead. We got the fair board is gonna be here to, uh, tell us a little bit about, uh, the upcoming fair, and we've asked them to come in and make a presentation, so come on down. Who's emceyin' this? Fair Board President?
Mayor.
Yes, sir. There you go.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff, uh, to appreciate the opportunity to be here and, uh, and talk to everyone here, everyone at home, and personally invite you all to the eighty-first Antelope Valley Fair. We are excited, kicks off in ten days, uh, with, uh, with a lot of great events nightly. Uh, I brought some posters for you and the, and the council, and I wanna, uh, point out, it's, uh, a great event, and we have our concert series, which could not happen without the great folks at the Palmdale Auto Mall.
And whose plan?
Well, uh, we're gonna get to that, uh, and, uh, but on behalf of, uh... You know, we got, we got a role for everybody. But, uh, on behalf of the Antelope Valley Fair Association, and all of the staff and volunteers, we wanna, wanna make sure everyone knows we're gonna have a great time this year, we got a lot of great entertainment, uh, a lot of great educational and agricultural programs for the family, and as always, a lot of that good fair food we love so much. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Bob Forché, who's president of one of the partner organizations in our governance, the Fiftieth District Agricultural Association. Bob?
Thank, oh, I get this. Uh, thank you. This year, our, our lineup for the entertainment, uh, I'll read it to you, uh, Friday, August sixteenth, is the Collective Soul in Gin Blossom, Saturday, August seventeenth, REO Speedwagon, Sunday, August eighteenth, Christian Maudau, her model, Monday, August nineteenth, Gabriel Iglesias Fluffy, that's, that's a big one. Tuesday, August twentieth, Travis Tritt, Charlie Daniels, and Wednesday, August twenty-first, Big and Rich Cowboy Troy Williams and Ree. So, uh, that's your lineup, and hopefully you'll, uh, take some time out and come to the fair, and enjoy the entertainment that we have lined up this year.
Alright, guys, after, uh, all that fun entertainment that you guys are having there, we want you guys to stop by those pavilions, we want you to stop by the Home Arts Pavilion, also known as the Van Dam Pavilion. Inside the Van Dam Pavilion is where we have all the fun home art stuff, inside there we have the baked goods that everybody presents, and we give ribbons to, also preserves, paintings, and formal table settings. Uh, we also have quilts that are made by local artists, uh, they also do seminars that take place in there daily, like, uh, floral making, uh, they also show you how to, uh, preserve jellies, jams, and the lovely ladies also sit in there knitting and crocheting all day long, they'll show you how to do all that fun stuff, and for other things going on there, just check out abfair.com for a list of events and times of all the fun events going on in our Home Arts Building.
Oh, hi, my name is Lilia Galindo, I was appointed by Governor Brown to the fair, and I have been there since two thousand thirteen. I want to let you know about our special days. Kids, seniors, and special needs citizens' day is August, it's on August nineteenth, and they are going to have a free entrance to the fair that day. Also, we have the Military Appreciation Day on August twenty-second, start at four P.M., military and families get in free, special souvenirs, and gifts are given out. We, we, we expect to see you there, thank you.
I'm Gary Van Dam, Director of the Antelope Valley Fair, and I've got a little trivia question. When did the Antelope Valley Fair start? Any, anybody?
Eighty-one years ago.
That's right.
He said it.
Thirty-eight.
Nineteen thirty-eight.
Nineteen thirty-eight, by the, um, alfalfa growers. So, um, we just wanna thank, um, the fair and everybody considering the alfalfa growers, and never to leave them out. Um, we have the Antelope Valley Rural Olympics coming up on the twenty-fourth, and we'd really like your support with that. Um, starts at six o'clock at night, and it's a family, um, event, and farming, um, tractors, hay squeezes, and hay bucket event, so, if anybody's interested in that, we'd, uh, like to have you there. Thank you.
So, my name is Debbie Dino, and I am a resident of the city of Palmdale. So, this is my fair tonight. I asked to do a presentation for our city, because we want you involved. We want the city of Palmdale, we want the residents of Palmdale to come to our fair, absolutely. What I'm gonna talk about is our, um, kids feeding kids. How many here have heard about kids feeding kids yet? A few? Okay. You are gonna hear about it, absolutely. So, kids feeding kids is a brand-new thing with, with, uh, the Antelope Valley Fair, and it's actually through our Junior Livestock Auction. And how it was created by, was by a couple of us that were at an appreciation dinner, and we had decided that the, the people that buy the meat at, at the, at the fair and at the auction, the meat usually, for the most part, leaves our valley, it is bought by a wholesaler. So, we caught to thinking, we have two great organizations in the city, we have Saves, and we have Grace Resources, and they need fresh protein meat. So, we got together and formed this, Kids Feeding Kids. What's grown in this valley is gonna stay in this valley, we're gonna feed our kids. So, that's how it started, we have put pigs all over town, I think there's a pig here in the city building, am I correct, Mayor? That, well, that's, that's our kids feeding kids, we are accepting donations online, we have teamed up with the, um, PTAs, so the schools are involved, the kids are involved. We ask you to come to the fair, have a good time, it's for all of us.
When you said there was a pig in the building, it was where you were talking about me when it comes to those Emblem Club tacos. So, uh, so in addition to all of that going on, uh, with, uh, to, to round out our lineup, we have our motorsports events, and those are some of my favorite events, I know a lot of people here have gone to see them every year, and that's Thursday, August twenty-second, the Figure Eight Races, Friday, August twenty-third, but back again, uh, after some really great times last year and the last few years, is Monster Truck Races, and of course, Sunday, to close out the fair, the Demolition Derby, you see the best crashes, a lot of fun, all, almost all local drivers, through local sponsorships, putting this together for, for our local community. So... Oh, yeah? Yeah, and the Rural Olympics, uh, as, uh, Gary was talking about, we've got the ever-popular Potato Race, I'll be competing for the third time, and I've actually been challenged by my boss, Senator Scott Wilk, who's teamed up with Assemblyman Lackey, they're gonna be competing for the first time, so, we've got a lot of ego riding on that race, and, uh, we're looking forward to that, so come and cheer on your favorite. So, but with that, again, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for, uh, letting us be here tonight to share the word. Uh, I think we have, uh, some other things, we have...
Grocers to hand out, and, um, this is about the Kids Feeding Kids program, and this is all of the events that are at the fair, I'm gonna leave them on the table in the back, so feel free to pick it up. No?
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Alright, let's give them a hand for being out here and taking the time to get some information out to the community. Thanks, you guys. And you gonna pass the pig here before you leave here? Oh, you leave the pig? Okay, um, where do you want, where do you wanna leave cupcake? You wanna leave it up here with you? Okay. Thanks. Thanks, ma'am. Thanks again. Thanks. Yeah, yeah, we want to, I got a left one up here, so everybody can see it during the whole meeting, too. Alright, thanks again, Antelope Valley Fair, that's always a blast, uh, we practically, we live up dry, at Drytown all summer, and when fall comes around, we live at the fair, so, and then we live at the gym after that, so... Alright, so, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Loa to come down and help me with this, we have our Rancho Vista Queens here this evening, and, uh, that's Mr. Loa's district, and we have a couple of certificates we'd like to introduce, Kelly Bowser and Sophia Curriel, and these are two of our, um, Miss Rancho Vista, and little, uh, Young Miss Rancho Vista, and Little Miss Rancho Vista. Mr. Loa, you wanna say something?
Well, these young ladies represent the future, not only of Rancho Vista, the city of Palmdale, Antelope Valley, but the state of California, we have a great representation of queens and princesses in this valley, and, uh, they're well-represented tonight with these two young ladies, so let's recognize them.
So, Kelly, here I have a certificate, so the city of Palmdale would like to extend this expression of pride in your accomplishment on being named Young Miss Rancho Vista. We're honored to have you represent the city as you perform community service, attend community events, and serve as a role model to other young women, and that goes for both of you. So, uh, Ray, I read one of those certificates, we're gonna let you do this, and we're gonna get a picture, have John, and I bet you your mom, and some other folks, uh, do we wanna do both of these here, and we have Sophia, here's one for you, and you know what I'm gonna do before we take those pictures?
Hi. Hi, my name is Kelly Bowser, and I'm ten years old, and tomorrow I start, start school at Leona Valley Elementary. I love wrestling, dirt bike... I love wrestling, dirt bike riding, and making slime.
Watch out.
And making a mess. I am pleased to have you...
I'm sorry, we messed you up, didn't I?
No, I just... I don't know what I'm going to say. And thank you for letting me be here, and thank you for giving me an award, and thank you for having me. Thank you.
There you go. I'll only get down for the Little Miss and for the dogs, okay? What you got? Tell us a little bit about you.
Hi, I'm Little Miss Rancho Vista. I'm six years old.
What school are you going to?
I'm going to go to Aerospace Academy Elementary next month. I still have a lung.
Okay, that's good. So you've got to see what these young ladies are out there all year long. They're helping us cut the ribbons. They're working with the local community groups, they're out there doing public service, and it's amazing, at the end of this year, they get a little bit like me, I get tongue-tied and stumble. At the end of the year, you're not going to believe how well they do and how much they've grown in a year. So we're just really proud to have these young ladies here, and if a mom wants to Take that out of Richard's check. Thank you. Now, but this is the big presentation of the evening because we've got quite a few people here. We have members of the Devil Pups, that's a Marine Corps leadership training program, and we're going to recognize them for their successful completion of the Devil Pups program. Representatives from the Congresswoman, State Senator, and the Assemblyman's Office, and the County Supervisor's Office, and a college will also be here, and, sir, you're on. You know the drill on this, I'm going to let you go with it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yep.
Do you think they're going to hear you?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Mr. Lewis. I'm the liaison representative for the Marine Corps Youth Program, known as Devil Pups, in the Antelope Valley. Devil Pups has been around since 1954. Been going really strong for several decades in the Antelope Valley, and again, this year, we were very successful.
We have 12 graduates in this year's group. Three of them are currently on vacation in Idaho, so we have the big nine right here tonight. Tonight, we'll start off with a few things. We'll run it just like we've always done it before. So let me just start it off with, if you were a guest speaker this year, please come
What we do on an annual basis every year, if somebody supports our program, helps us out, guest speakers, we support them by coining them with a Devil Pup coin or challenge coin, Let's hear it for the guest speakers, please. You are an award presenter. Please, take your place right over here where they were. Let's hear it for the award presenters. I'm going to call them out, and they're going to come right down, right down the line, and they'll stop right there, and everybody's going to... Okay, now we'll have the graduates from this year's 2019 encampment come forward, as I call them. Cole Leaf.
Congratulations.
Eric Holland.
Congratulations, you earned it.
You've come a long way, buddy. Keep it up. Samantha Leaf.
Congratulations, you earned it.
You can use it all over the year to come. Dylan Bourne.
Congratulations, you earned it.
Carlos Guzman.
Thank you, you got my shirt.
Giovanni Valesquez.
I've got another award for you, we'll bring it to the floor in front of everybody, sir.
Ryan Rutledge.
Congratulations, you earned it.
Gladys Negrete.
Congratulations, you're fabulous.
Alyssa Tollis.
Congratulations.
Okay, parents, I'll give you 30 seconds to take pictures of your kids, and I'm counting right now. Okay, parents, please sit down. 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. We also have Haley Rudd, Jay Gregg, and Juliet Gregg. They're not present here tonight, but they're the ones that are out of town, so we want to congratulate them as well. Thank you. You can probably dismiss them.
Devil Pup candidates, take your seats. Correction, Devil Pups, not candidates. Take your seats.
Or bail out. Liz Seelman.
Award presenters, take your seat.
All right, so we have Liz Seelman here this evening. She's a government relations manager from Southern California Edison, and she's going to be speaking to us and give us a quick... We've had a lot of inquiries. People have been asking, what is all this that happens when we get these notices for a power emergency shut-off potential, and what does that mean? And Liz is going to explain that all to us this evening. So turn the mic around here, and it's all yours, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Mayor and members of the council, my name's Liz Seelman. I'm a government relations manager for Southern California Edison. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about our safety measures SCE is taking to mitigate and both prevent wildfires. As you may know, 10 of the most destructive fires in California's history have happened since 2015, and eight of those 10 have occurred in the past two years. Just under one-third of SCE's 50,000 square miles is considered high-fire-risk areas. The safety and well-being of our communities is the main objective of our 2019 wildfire mitigation plan. As a result of Senate Bill 901, SCE submitted our wildfire mitigation plan to the California Public Utilities Commission back in February. Shortly thereafter... Yes, sure, absolutely.
We're going to go ahead and let everybody that's taken off here so that the others can hear the presentation here. Let me free up a few seats. There's plenty of seats here, don't be blocking a fire, I also got the chief back there. All right. Cap, can we get that inner door closed there? Thanks. All right, Liz, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. So as a result of Senate Bill 901, SCE was asked to submit a wildfire mitigation plan to the California Public Utilities Commission. We did that in February. Shortly thereafter, it was approved. This plan is part of a larger ongoing effort that we've had. It was called our Grid Safety and Resiliency Plan. It's a $582 million plan. Our WMP for short, Wildfire Mitigation Plan, it's a two-pronged approach. One is to enhance our operational practices, and two, to fortify our electric system through infrastructure improvements. So we call that basically grid hardening. What that means is we're making our equipment more fire-resistant. In terms of hardening, our infrastructure, we've replaced more than 183 miles of power line with covered conductor. These power lines are covered with an insulated material that mitigates the risk of sparks occurring when a foreign object happens to hit it. Also, under extreme weather conditions, our lines may touch each other, that too could create a spark, so the insulation mitigates for that. We intend to install 5,500 miles of covered conductor by 2025. On these same lines, we are switching out our wood poles for composite fire-resistant poles as well. To date, we've installed 7,500 faster-acting fuses onto our system, and we've updated more than 1,500 protective devices with more sensitive settings to trip the breaker. So we're adding more remote-controlled automatic re-closers. These are basically like circuit breakers at your house. If there's a fault, the breaker opens. Typically, it will test the line, if it tests good, it will close back up, and we're good to go. In these circumstances, we're actually keeping those circuit breakers open. We're having qualified personnel patrol the whole line before we re-energize it on these high-fire-risk circuits. In terms of operational practices, to bolster our situational awareness capabilities, we've installed 200 weather stations across our service territory. We plan to install 850 by 2020. There are six weather stations that fall within or just next to Palmdale boundaries, and there's approximately 15 or more weather stations throughout the Antelope Valley. We've also installed 100 high-definition cameras in remote areas, and we intend to install 160 by 2020. We have a 24-hour situational awareness center. It's co-located our emergency operations center. We are also conducting enhanced overhead inspections, so we are inspecting all of our overhead transmission and distribution line equipment. We thus far, in the past five months, have inspected 400,000-plus structures. This year, we also launched a robust vegetation management program, so SCE inspects 900,000 trees annually. We trim 700,000 trees, and that equates to about 2,000 trees a day. We do have a number of in-house arborists, so we do know if the tree is dead, dying, or diseased, and that gives us a better sense of where we need to focus our vegetation folks. Lastly, we've been enhancing our public safety power shut-off program, and I will talk about that in just a minute. This is just a quick screenshot of the weather stations that we have throughout Southern California. This is public information, the link at the bottom. You could actually go in and scroll and get a better idea of exactly where these weather stations are located. We have established targeted wind speed thresholds by circuit by applying statistical analytics based on historical wind-caused outages, and we're receiving input from our fire scientists on fuel conditions. So again, these localized weather stations are meant for us to understand the conditions on that particular circuit in that exact location. We know that the winds are much higher here in the Antelope Valley, let's say, than further down the hill, so we're accounting for that difference. So this is SCE's mitigation strategy based on fire science. Fire needs three elements to start: oxygen, heat, and fuel. Eliminating any side of this fire triangle helps to prevent ignitions. Our goal is to remove the fuel side through what I just spoke about, vegetation management, and then all of our grid hardening, and then we're looking to remove the heat side through our public safety power shut-off. So in short, public safety power shut-off, or PSPS, is the preemptive shutting off of power during extreme weather conditions on particular circuits in high-fire-risk areas. So there are 16 potential PSPS circuits that touch or go within the boundary lines of the city of Palmdale. City staff has been provided with GIS file overlay maps. There's also PDF maps that are available online, and I'll tell you where. One of the main questions is, how do we decide to start monitoring or to implement a public safety power shut-off? So we have in-house meteorologists that are doing predictive weather modeling. We also have established targeted wind speeds, which I mentioned, on the particular weather stations, and we're receiving input from our fire scientists on the fuel conditions. Secondly, we have real-time observations from qualified personnel in the field, so there are actual folks on those particular circuits looking at them and taking an assessment and saying... And they have handheld weather devices, so they're making sure what they're seeing in the field is the same thing that we're doing internally in our predictive modeling. They're also making sure that there's nothing falling into our lines, and they're assessing the threat conditions. So those are the real-time observations, and then we're also receiving input from our local state and fire authorities and emergency management personnel, and we're assessing the impacts of de-energizing circuits on first responders and essential services. So all those folks are being communicated with prior to us even deciding if we're going to implement a PSPS monitoring. And this is the part in terms of notifying folks, customers, residents. Four to seven days out, as I mentioned, we're doing predictive modeling. Three days out, if the public safety power shut-off conditions are still forecasted, we stand up our incident management team internally. We operate off of the FEMA ICS program. And then we start identifying specific circuits that may be impacted. Again, we start notifying our county operational areas. Forty-eight hours out is when we begin our notifications. So we first notify local governments, first responders, state staff, emergency management, and other emergency managers. We then notify essential customers like water providers, hospitals, schools, if they should be impacted on a particular circuit. Immediately thereafter, we notify critical care customers, and those are customers on lifesaving devices. So we have a special process for notifying these folks. We first attempt to reach them through our automatic calling system. If they do not answer, we continue to call until they answer. If they still do not answer, we actually send field crews to knock on their door and do a door knock. This is a process that we have in place for any extended outage. It's not just for the public safety power shut-off, but it's for both. Twenty-four hours out, we repeat this process. The notice will either say one of two things. Your circuit is still being monitored. For PSPS, please prepare for a potential outage, and/or your circuit is no longer being monitored. So that's sort of done. We'd like to provide a third notification. Please note, it's his PSPS ideal timeline, because of course, we can't predict the weather and conditions. We would like to give a third notification prior to potentially shutting off power. However, if somebody in the field, our personnel's in the field, and they see something that is urgent, I've been told within milliseconds, he can actually radio in, and we would shut off that power line, which hence is the reason that we're giving them 48-hour, 24-hour advanced notification. Four to seven days out, as I mentioned, we're doing predictive modeling. Three days out, if the public safety power shut-off conditions are still forecasted, we stand up our incident management team internally. We operate off of the FEMA ICS program. And then we start identifying specific circuits that may be impacted. Again, we start notifying our county operational areas. 48 hours out is when we begin our notifications. So we first notify local governments, first responders, state staff, emergency management, and other emergency managers. We then notify essential customers like water providers, hospitals, schools, if they should be impacted on a particular circuit. Immediately thereafter, we notify critical care customers. And those are customers on lifesaving devices. So we have a special process for notifying these folks. We first attempt to reach them through our automatic calling system. If they do not answer, we continue to call until they answer. If they still do not answer, we actually send field crews to knock on their door and do a door knock. This is a process that we have in place for any extended outage. It's not just for the public safety power shut-off, but it's for both. 24 hours out, we repeat this process. The notice will either say one of two things. Your circuit is still being monitored for PSPS, please prepare for a potential outage, and/or your circuit is no longer being monitored. So that's sort of done. We'd like to provide a third notification. Please note, this is PSPS ideal timeline, because of course, we can't predict the weather and conditions. We would like to give a third notification prior to potentially shutting off power. However, if somebody in the field, our personnel's in the field, and they see something that is urgent, I've been told within milliseconds, he can actually radio in and we would shut off that power line. Which hence is the reason that we're giving them 48-hour, 24-hour advanced notification. In terms of restoration, two things have to happen. One is the weather conditions have to change. And two is we actually have an SCE personnel walk the line and take a visual inspection to make sure it's safe to turn back on. So those are two things. So a little bit of context about the public safety power shut-off. In 2018, we de-energized or turned off power two times across our entire 50,000-square-mile service territory. The number of folks that were impacted by that was 150 people. I want to share that because it gives you an idea of SCE's automation and sophistication to sort of switch over capacity on other circuits so that we can impact as few folks as possible. So we are encouraging folks to prepare for an outage because outages can happen for a host of reasons. Apart from just a public safety power shut-off, something can go into a line. The weather conditions themselves may have an energized line go down. Earthquakes and other natural disasters could occur. So we're encouraging the community, please be prepared. We're asking customers to go to SCE.com/OutageAlerts to update their contact information. Again, some folks may have had an SCE account for the past 30 years, and they have a landline on there. It takes about 10 seconds to go online. You can also call the number, the 800 number, and you can just tell them text, email, phone call, your preference of choice. And this last slide gives a number, a fair amount of resources and information about how you can access the maps, how you can access weather cameras, and more information about a mitigation plan.
So I've had people that have contacted me because I'm one of those people that gets the notifications from you.
Sure.
And I know that our PIO communications team does as well. And we rebroadcast that, and then people always have questions. That doesn't necessarily mean it's going to get shut off.
Correct.
It's just saying that there's a potential for it based on weather conditions, correct?
It's saying we are monitoring the circuit that you're served off of for a potential public safety power shut-off. And that way, within 24 hours, hopefully, they get a notice that says we are no longer monitoring it, the conditions have changed, and/or we are still monitoring it. So this entire PSPS is basically a monitoring activation. It doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to de-energize our...
Because sometimes people see that and they start freaking out. My food's going to, you know, die, and my mom's on oxygen, now what? So this is to give people adequate notice.
I think there's some process improvement in the language that we use so that folks really understand that this is being looked at. But again, as I mentioned, 2018, actual de-energization happened twice. Very remote areas, I think Wrightwood and somewhere up in the Angeles Forest. So...
I know that you're a lot more, this has got a little bit higher visibility with people, and that you're being a little bit more diligent, especially after some of the devastating wildfires.
Absolutely.
And I know we're getting a few more of those notifications now. So I think that that's what just kind of gets people on edge, so.
Yep, and we're going to continue to have community meetings. You will see more media, radio ads. At one time, we felt like it wasn't impacting as many folks, so that may become confusing. But I think people need to know and want to hear exactly what the program is. So you will probably be seeing more of that on TV and on radio.
And for more information, the best thing to do is go to SCE.com, and you can find the links on there to tell them more about the program. And if there is an alert, the information is there.
SCE.com/Wildfire. And from there, you can look at the public safety power shut-off. You can also look at any of the mitigation work that we're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If anybody has any specific questions for Liz, she'll be out in the back here for a few minutes, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, I know, I know some of you just recently came in, so I want to remind everybody, we have speaker slips in the back and up the city clerk's desk here. If you plan on speaking on any item tonight, please fill out a speaker slip so we can manage our discussion time this evening and get through the, get through the agenda, okay? Item number five is a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, item number six, this is public comments on a consent calendar and on non-agenda items. So if you have a comment on items under consent calendar, that's item number seven. It goes, there's a bunch of items on there through 7.21. This is the correct time. Or on something that is not on the agenda, but within the subject matter authority of the organization, now's the time to come up. Do we have any speaker slips?
Yes, we have a William Elliott, 7.12, and a Michael Publicher, 7.12.
Okay, so...
We also have David, excuse me, David Halber, number six, and a Dita Pulliam. She did not put which item she was...
Lisa, do you want to, is there, is this a general comment? Lisa?
It's Dita Pulliam.
Pulliam? Alright, so first speaker, sir. State your name, so we just keep it, keep it in line here. So 7.12 is this, sir?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Stop sign to go to hell. Name's William Elliott, I live at 401572nd Street West, Leona Valley. We just found out about this. I've been on the town council, a lot of stuff. I understand how things work between the city and the community of Leona Valley and stuff. And I would have to say this was all screwed up. I also believe it's not part of, you're not following the settlement agreement by notifying the town council that things are going on with the area out there and that stuff. I'm more concerned about the fact that stop sign there is going to make more noise, increase the pollution from the stopping and going, and traffic in that road is, like you probably already know, it's higher than normal. And it's just going to increase more backups and everything else in the area, right there at my house and Rick's house. I'm here to oppose it. I don't believe you've done your due diligence with the county and with the Leona Valley Town Council. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker? Who's it?
We have Michael Publicher, also to speak on 7.12.
Good evening. My name is Michael Publicher, and I am the president of Leona Valley Town Council. During 2018, we've had significant injury traffic accidents occur in Leona Valley involving our residents. Leona Valley Town Council contacted both the Sheriff's Department of Palmdale Station and CHP to see what their input would be in regards to these issues. The Leona Valley Town Council subsequently contacted both the city of Palmdale and Los Angeles County regarding traffic speed surveys which impact the accident area. David Finch from the city of Palmdale addressed our town council meeting in October 2018. He noted the issues at hand and advised he would keep us informed. LA County Engineers addressed our December 2018 meeting, advised they were working on the traffic study, and once again, would be keeping us informed. Chris Benjamin from our town council, who is in charge of our Community Health, Safety, and Welfare Committee, has been in periodic contact with both city and county, and was never updated as to the findings or the recommendations. This represents a serious breakdown in communications. Our opinion is that the findings and recommendations should have been presented to the Leona Valley Town Council meeting in order for public discussion to take place. Or notify the town council of the intent to take action and give us an opportunity to respond. We only found out about this due to a board member checking the agenda to see if there was anything regarding the Ritter Ranch project being discussed. Since we haven't been notified of those meetings either, even though there was a settlement agreement in place, it is necessary for us to remain proactive in the best interest of Leona Valley. This is a separate issue which we'll be addressing in the very near future. This still identifies yet another serious breakdown in communications. Supervisor Barker's office was notified of the stop sign issue via email on July 29th last week. Yet, no one thought to extend the same courtesy to the town council. We, as a town council, receive the calls and complaints from our residents, and we take an active role in addressing their issues. The courtesy of notice goes a long way.
So what you're saying is supervisor's office got a notice a week ago?
Yes.
And they didn't call you guys out there in county?
We were just notified.
Okay, well, we'll talk to them about, maybe, up and at, a little bit.
What can you do? Leona Valley Town Council would like this item tabled for three months. This will give us an opportunity to discuss it with our residents at our next town council meeting scheduled for August 12th. We will be inviting both the county engineers and city public works to our meeting to present their findings and recommendations. This will also give us an opportunity to discuss this as a community and arrive at a conclusion. We hope that you, as council, would consider our input before making your final decision. You are going to expect our town council's courtesy in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who do we have next?
We have a David Halber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to introduce myself. My name's David Halber. I'm your film liaison for the city of Palmdale. And I just wanted to give you a brief background on me and also kind of inform you about some of the really incredible things that are going on in the film industry here in Southern California. I've been working in live-action film productions since 1980. And California, as you may or may not be aware of, has suffered from something that's called runaway production, which has been the outsourcing of film productions to other states and other countries for the last 25 years. It's had a dramatic impact on the economy for Southern California. But fortunately, Jerry Brown, a few years ago, signed a tax incentive program that's allowed filming to start coming back. A year ago, in June of 2018, he reinstated it. It's now called the Tax Incentive 2.0. They've increased the annual budget for these tax incentives from 100 million to 330 per year, and it's been extended all the way to 2025. This has had a phenomenal impact on the film industry. It's brought back 36 TV shows to California from as far away as Dublin and Canada. And it's every year, we've seen a 10% to 11% to 12% increase in the number of films that are being shot in Southern California. Part of this is also, to qualify for this, you have to film 49% in, 49% within what's called the TMZ, which stands for the 30-mile studio zone. It ends at Acton, at the Crown Valley Road on the 14 freeway. So you have to shoot 49 inside the zone, 51 in, anywhere else in California. But they've recently changed that, and they've added a secondary studio zone, which includes most of Palmdale. That circle ends at about, between Avenue O and Avenue N on the 14 freeway. Consequently, we're getting a lot more productions coming up here, and there are a lot of studios and features that are looking at taking advantage of this. The whole industry is changing dramatically. Streaming has taken off. And one of the things that's happened now is that Amazon and Netflix are now looking at filming out here on a regular basis. We've got more scouts scouting the Antelope Valley area, including Palmdale, like ants at a picnic. And we're hoping, I'm hoping, as part of this general plan for the city of Palmdale, that somebody is going to build a soundstage and production facilities up here. Because the, the need is great, and it's something that we, unfortunately, because of the outsourcing of films to other countries and other states, hasn't taken off yet. But I can see that in the future, and I just want you to know that I'm very, very proactive. I've got a background in public relations, and I'm really trying to do my best to get the attention of a lot of the studios and people who make decisions to do this, to come up here and get planted in the Antelope Valley to get a new industry here, because it's going to provide a lot of jobs once that happens up here. It's an exciting time for the film industry. I see a lot of things in the pipeline. There are a lot of people that are, live up here that work in production, producers, directors, and all of the craft people in all different trades. So I'm just looking forward to seeing how this is going to develop.
Quick question, is this the, are you referring to the secondary studio zone?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
You can find that online if you go to the California Film Commission's website. It's C, what's that, CCF, and then .gov, .org, and there's an interactive map that you can zoom in, you can see how much of Palmdale is inside that secondary zone.
We're seeing the yellow signs up, so it says crew.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Liz Seelman?
Liz... Liz Delman, was it?
Yes, she's coming up.
Okay.
Regarding 717.
Liz, yeah. 717.
Hello again, mayor and city council members. My name's Liz Seelman, Government Relations Manager, SoCal Edison. On 717, California for Balanced Energy Solutions. As you may know, Southern California Edison supports customer choice, affordability, and efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and other forms of air pollution. What we're asking tonight, if there's a potential to potentially hold off on the consent for the California resolutions for balanced energy, we believe that there is some language in there. We too use gas as part of our power plants and other work that we do in order to get electricity. However, we feel like the language is a bit restrictive. I apologize, I didn't have an opportunity to meet with city staff prior to and submit some suggested language for that resolution. But we would like to have an opportunity to present some suggested language that would make that resolution be a little bit more broad moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Robert DuChau.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I had to come up after Liz and I were sitting together back there and talking about this, and I knew she was coming up, so I had to. SoCal Gas, Rob Duco's Southern California Gas Company. We are also in favor of clean, affordable, renewable energy. And I think the resolution in front of you speaks about abroadness, about not putting all our eggs in one basket, not eliminating sources of energy from the, from the mix that your residents use every day. And the fact is, natural gas, which, you know, I work for a natural gas company, natural gas is under attack by California. California wants to electrify everything, as was pointed out by Liz. Natural gas is a big part of the mix going into generating electricity. Every home in Palmdale, you can't live in a home without electricity. So if a homeowner wants to have all their appliances electric, they can do it now. They don't need a mandate to do it. But 90% of them choose to heat their home with natural gas because it's clean, affordable, and reliable. And it would be cost prohibitive for most of your residents to be forced to convert everything from what they have now to electricity. And just going back to the presentation made earlier, the public safety power shut-off program. When there's a wildfire, the Thomas Fire, I'll give you an example in Ventura County, in December of 2017, almost two years ago. There was one fire district that could not fight that fire because the electricity was off and they had electric pumps for their water. If they had natural gas pumps, they could have pumped their water and saved some homes. So it's, it's a well-balanced portfolio of energy sources is important for everyone in the community, and I think that's what this resolution speaks to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That's it? Okay. So anybody else that, on general public comments that wanted to say something? Because I know a few people walked in here late. You want to make sure that if you're going to speak on any item this evening, make sure you fill out a slip so we can kind of manage our time this evening, okay? Alright. City council, on the consent calendar? Okay. Anything else? Or a motion to approve?
7.10, 7.11.
Okay. Anything else or a motion?
Vote to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, so with the exception of 710, 11, and 12, I have a motion to approve and a second. Are we ready for the vote?
Your second.
Start voting.
It shows 4-0 with council member Benton Court absent. Okay, 710 and 711 are kind of related here.
They are. I don't have questions on these items, such as wanting to see if staff can give us a rundown in about five minutes to see what these two items are about. Because I think it's important for the people to know what these items are. I think it's exciting to see that the airport project is moving forward. And again, if you can just give us a little update or a rundown on these two items.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm excited to tell you, we have right now, three consultants under contract. We've had an attorney, an airport-specific attorney under contract. We have had air planners, which is 710, under contract. This is, would be their second contract. Under 711, that is JAVIation. Air planners, they are specific consultants, specifically dealing with airliners. The different, talking to United, talking to...
American, maybe?
American, maybe talking to Spirit, some other airliners. JAVIation is talking, they're doing feasibility studies, things like that. But city council, I'm here to tell you, we've never been closer. But this is a team approach. It's the elected officials, the city manager, economic development, the planning department, finance, legal, public works, our partners at Plan 42, the Air Force, our contracting partners, our consultants, and the P3 partners that we're talking about bringing, that are global. These are not... These are not just, these are global partners that we're talking about who have done this. When we came back and Councilman Lowe went to San Diego with us at this P3 conference, four days later, we were on the phone, and our legal consultant, who was not there, was on a phone call with me. He said, and I quote, "He had already heard from industry sources, the city of Palmdale is being talked about in the airport circles, is like the number one project, is the place to talk about in the next development in the airport space for public-private partnerships." So we are that, this close to being the next commercial airport development in the public-private partnership. So I'd ask you to consider moving these two projects for 710 and 711 if we want airport commercial air service in the next two to three years.
Outstanding. I know this is a City ATAC meeting, and we were like the, we were like the new girl at the dance, so everybody wanted to talk about us.
It's a good analogy. We've been down similar paths before, and I think one of the things that makes us very different is the fact that we control the land, the fact that we have access to airstrips, Tarmacs, that essentially we will be, to some extent, or probably to a large extent, free from Los Angeles World Airports and have greater self-determination on this issue. This is a great economic engine if this is brought to us. It works hand-in-hand with the fact that we've got these major aerospace contracts, defense contracts, right here at Plant 42 with our manufacturing elements that are there. And that in itself creates a number of flights that would be taking advantage of an airport here, not to speak of the fact that we are so close to the west side and San Fernando Valley. That might make it easier for them to fly east out of here. So I think it's a very exciting thing. I think it's going to be a great economic driver, and I'm looking forward to these consultants and the other specialists bringing this home.
Right.
It's about time.
And you know, we need to be united as elected officials and staff, but we need your help. We need to be united as a region. And, I mean, this will be a true benefit for the aerospace valley.
I agree. This is a game changer for everyone in the Antelope Valley. We've always been limited by our ability to move people, goods, and services in and out of this valley. We've been limited, so opening up an airport opens up a world of opportunity of economic development, housing, and like, once again, it has people take a closer look at us, because we've been limited by so many, for so many years, by how we can move these goods and services, people, and in and out of the valley. So it's going to change the game for us when we get it open.
Yeah, it's just the fact that all of these other partners are not willing to play with us, the Air Force, Lawa, not to mention the opportunities coming to California.
Got them coming to us instead of us having a beat down.
That was the case before. We would go to them, and they're coming to us. And also the Olympics, the Soccer World Cup coming in 2028, LAX cannot absorb that much trouble anymore. So I think this is just a perfect time, and I just wanted to bring those items up so that you could explain to the residents where we are with this project, and it looks like we are going to be able to make it happen this time. Thank your staff for working, city manager and your staff for working so diligently on this, because it's going to be a game changer for us.
I appreciate Jim's leadership in having me to work on this.
Thank you. Just wanted to make one additional comment. In San Diego, at that P3 conference, which was attended by a great number of people that are specialists in airline industry, I saw the consultant firsthand, making things happen right there on the spot. He got some great meetings with some key players here, and I think it's going to happen. I was, I happened to be on the council from 2001 to 2005. When things like this came and went, some of them were set up for failure, I think this has got all of the elements to make it go. So, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Perky.
Thank you.
All right, well, exciting to have a motion on this item.
Vote to approve both items.
A second? 7.1 and 7.11.
710 and 11.
Hey, Hoover, Richard Loa. We had a second by Warren Correia.
Okay, you have a motion and a second?
Start voting, please.
Show your votes.
The motion passes for yes, and Laura Benton Court absent.
Okay, 7.12. Chuck, you want to tell us a little about this?
Yes, Mayor Hough Power and members of the City Council. This item goes back a little ways. I think Mr. Elliott's summary of it is pretty close to what I understand, and I believe that we have a couple of letters that were emailed to us from Mr. Elliott. I think maybe they went to the council or city manager eventually made their way to my desk. And our staff has taken a lot of care to look at this intersection. However, it is in the county, or two-thirds of it are in the county. A great, I mean, the study that has been done on this by the county is probably that thick. So the bad part is, though, that I think it's, you know, with that much study, I think it's, we attended meetings of the town council, and I guess our fault is in not ensuring that contact was made with the town council after the decision by the county to do the three-way stop and before we brought it to you. So that falls squarely on my shoulders, and I think that if it's the council's desire, that I think that going back and taking a look at this and making sure that they've heard, they've had their say, we may end up back here at the same recommendation for you, but I think that if it hasn't been done, and I believe that it hasn't been done, that we should do that, go back and look at this.
The county really should have, they're the lead agency on this, right?
They are, but we have been in contact. We've, you know, we've had representatives go to the town council meetings and hear them out. Speed is one of the biggest things that, in letters, and just, you go out there, and speed is the biggest problem out there. And I think two accidents in the study that were identified in county studies. So this is one way to cut down on the speed. So it is a problem. But yes, the county, yes, the town council, the, you know, it's in this county, but we have had contact with them as well, so.
What's our turnaround time? Let's just say hypothetically, we were to approve this tonight, how long does it take for this actually to, for the work to get done, for the purchase orders to get out there, the contractor to get the work done, the widgets to get made, whatever has to get done?
Yeah, I believe this is all, I'll just check with Bruce real quick, but I believe this is all county, all stuff that we would do with our maintenance forces, right, Bruce? Yes. So these would all be internal forces. It could happen within a week or two.
Since it's in county, excuse me, since it's in county jurisdiction, has it gone through the approval process at the county?
Yes. I'm told that it did go through all the processes that they need in order to bring it. I know there's a county representative here tonight if you want to make a statement. However, that is, that's the case, is that they have it fully approved, the county does, on their side.
So if we take an action to table this matter, how does that affect what the county has done?
Well, we will coordinate with them. It has to all be done at the same time, so they would do some of the work, we would do part of it on ours. So we would just postpone that work until after the next meeting.
May I ask the city attorney? So what happens in the meantime if there's an accident out there?
Well, we're at the same exposure we are over the next, we have been and we will be for the next month or so.
The town council doesn't have any exposure, though, do they?
I don't think so.
Because it, but it'd just be the city and the county.
Right. But I would recommend, rather than table it, continue it to a specific date, to the September meeting, because I think there's a town council meeting next week.
I think the request was a 90-day table.
Well, you know what? My daughter-in-law was almost killed on that street, and I'm going to vote no if we want to do this 90 days. I don't want to see any more blood on that road. So I will make the motion that we continue this to the September meeting.
May I speak to that?
Sure, yes, please.
I certainly don't want to have any additional blood spilled at that intersection. I am also concerned with the fact that there seems to be a breakdown in communication with our neighbors, and that's significant, and I think that we need to, perhaps something can be done in the next 30 days, which is what the motion's calling for.
Yeah, I think a lot of communication with the town council, I think that's what they're looking for, is just a little bit of bridging that gap and kind of closing the community a little bit.
If we find that something that we hadn't anticipated comes up, there's some new information here, there's nothing to stop us, that if this is an ill-advised decision, or if a traffic signal is warranted there, or something else is, that we can still take that at the September meeting and continue it, but I want to, I want to make sure we keep the fire lit underneath this and keep this thing moving forward. So that's why I don't want to put this thing off indefinitely or for a quarter of a year. So if we can...
The action is ready to be taken. Once the decision is made, you know, that, it'll happen within a very short period of time.
I think, you know, I want to urge staff, and you particularly, Mr. Herrmann, I appreciate you taking the burden of not, or the responsibility for that.
Well, it is. I mean, ultimately, it falls to me.
Right, and I appreciate your candor in that, but let's really have a good communication with these folks out here, make sure that we're good neighbors as well.
Yeah, and I do want to be clear, though, that it was, I believe that it was fairly good up until a point. We just didn't tie that last bit.
Looks like we didn't close the loop.
That's right, and that's really what it was.
I think they were more caught off guard than anything, and probably just surprised when they take a look and then found that.
Well, that's, you know, I, yeah, you know what they say about...
Let's do that. Let's make sure that our counterparts on the county side are making a proper interface. I know they have a supervisor as a representative that's assigned to those meetings. Let's make sure that representative is abundantly aware of the discussion we had here and that they carry the ball as well.
Yes, sir.
You know what, I'll just make a comment on that. I don't think that we should take all the responsibility, not being the lead agency. The county is the one that is the lead agency. It also falls on the county. Preach has led, the representative Chuck Boswick, if he was here, Preach has left. So I think that we should recognize that it's not 100% our responsibility, since we're not the lead agency on this project.
I'll call for a question.
So there's a motion to continue?
Motion to continue this next meeting.
Okay. Start voting.
Something happened on my screen here.
Don't hit it too hard, it doesn't like to work.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I'll make sure the two representatives get my card tonight, but then we'll make sure we connect with them for the next meeting, town council.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Madam City Clerk, we spoke over you?
That's okay. The motion passed, and with four yes, one absent.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to item 8.1.
Mayor and Council, good evening. The item before you is a public hearing and adoption of Resolution Number CC 2019-070, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, installation, rehabilitation, improvement, and/or equipping of solid waste disposal facilities in Palmdale, California for the benefit of waste management. So this evening, the issues before you are to hold a public hearing to allow the community to provide testimony on the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority. And then the second action is to adopt Resolution Number 2019-070, approving a plan of finance for the issuance of the CMFA's solid waste disposal revenue bonds. And it's statute recommendation that you open a public hearing. We do have a representative from CMFA, Mr. Ben Baker, so if there's any questions of him, there's a representative of that organization also here.
Good. We'll open a public hearing, and could I ask Ben to come up and explain what these bonds are and where the responsibility for paying them and the liability on them is not on us, or however that works?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Ben Barker. I'm with the California Municipal Finance Authority. Tonight is a TEFRA. A TEFRA is a requirement of the IRS tax code. Whenever a developer or anybody is seeking taxes and financing, there needs to be a public hearing. It can be done at the city, county, or state level. The CMFA is a joint powers authority, and Palmdale's a member of ours. So we always try to do the tougher hearings at the most local level. The CMFA is being asked to issue the bonds, which means that the city is alleviated of any liability, responsibility, or moral obligations with the bonds. The city does not participate in the financing at all. The city is merely holding a public hearing, and this way it keeps the city from putting any risk or liability onto themselves. The CMFA is the joint powers authority that will be issuing the bonds, and Bank of America will be doing a public offering. There's 14 other jurisdictions that are going through the same process, and that's why they're being issued in this manner. So I could answer any other questions that may arise.
No questions.
Anybody here? Do we have any public speaker slips on this item?
We do not.
Was there anybody that showed up late that didn't fill out a slip and wanted to speak on this item? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
And Mayor, just, I gave, I don't think I read the complete title of the resolution, so I wanted to read that into the record if I may. Resolution Number CC 2019-070, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving a plan of finance for the issuance of the California Municipal Finance Authority Solid Waste Disposal Revenue Bonds Waste Management, Inc. project in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $300 million for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, installation, rehabilitation, improvement, and/or equipping of solid waste disposal facilities and certain other matters relating thereto.
Very good. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to close public hearing at this time. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Out of post. Okay, motion carries.
So it's 300 million, sounds like a huge number, but this is, we're only a small part of this.
20 million. Not to exceed 20 million, so probably 17-ish, 16-ish in Palmdale.
Okay. And that's, those are bonds that are going to be the financial burden on another entity, not Palmdale, on you. That's a lot of money.
There's always trash, right?
There's always trash.
Yeah. Anybody else or a motion?
Second.
Have a motion to approve the item?
A second.
And a second?
What was the second?
You have buttons pushed?
I need a second.
Did you have?
It's not in.
All right, I think he pushed.
Juan made the motion.
Okay, so I get...
Need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, Louis got the second?
Start voting. The motion passes with four yes, one absent.
Okay, the next item is item 8.3. Mr. Euler, or, ah, it's a Bruce. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one here. I'm sorry. I flipped two pages here inadvertently. 8.2.
Good evening. I'd like to start off with reading the title of the resolution and the ordinance. Resolution Number CC 2019-068, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving general plan amendment 19001, a request to change the land use designation from CC Community Commercial to MFR Multifamily Residential, 10.1 to 16 dwelling units per acre, and MDHR Medium High Density Residential, minimum density of 30 units per acre on a vacant parcel located at the northwest corner of Rancho Vista Boulevard and 15th Street West. Ordinance Number 1528, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving zone change 19001, a request to change the zone from C3 General Commercial to R3 Multiple Residential and R430 High Density Residential on a vacant parcel located at the northwest corner of Rancho Vista Boulevard and 15th Street West. Last month, the Planning Commission approved the site plan review, plan development permit, tract map, and conditional use permit for development of the project, which includes apartment units, townhouses, and commercial retail. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of the general plan amendment and zone change necessary to implement the project. This is an aerial photograph showing the project site. As you can see, to the east is existing Antelope Valley Mall. To the north is an incorporated county rural residential. To the west is single-family residential, as is to the south. The request before you tonight is in response to the increased demand for market-rate multifamily housing to meet the needs of the significant influx of employees associated with the aerospace industry at Plant 42. to meet the needs of the significant influx of employees associated with the aerospace industry at Plant 42. Currently, the site is general planned for community commercial. And the proposal is to divide it into three different land uses. Community commercial remaining on the southwest corner, southeast corner, I'm sorry. Townhouse style development on medium density residential west of that. And on the north section will be the high-density apartment complex. Similar thing is happening or is being requested for the zoning. Currently, the entire site is zoned C3. The proposal is to break it up similarly to handle the three different land uses. This is the site plan that the Planning Commission approved, subject to the approval of the zoning change and general plan amendment. As you can see, there's a grocery store, Sprouts, anchoring the center with a, does this have a pointer? Let's see. Here we go. This corner over here is an inline commercial building with an art plaza and dining terraces for restaurants with a one-drive-through restaurant. Townhouses are proposed in this section. And this is, these are going to be apartments in two- and three-story configuration. A common concern with land use changes is the impact of traffic. Residential projects actually generate significantly less traffic than do commercial projects. On the slide here is a compare, side-by-side comparison of the traffic generation with the proposed project and an assumed 100% commercial project. The project has been designed to be architecturally compatible throughout. This is the sample of the commercial components. This is a sample of the apartment components. Two and three-story elements utilizing the same massing and colors and materials. Here's an example of the townhouses, which would be up by Rancho Vista Boulevard. Significant here is the lower elevation. That would be the rear or the west-facing elevation. As you can see, these windows here that face the existing residential development are all clear-story windows. Those window sills are at about six feet in height. The only full-sized windows either face directly north or south as the articulation of the building allows. An initial study was prepared for the project. It was circulated pursuant to the state regulations under SEQA. It was released for a 20-day review prior to the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission approved the document in association with the project. The City Council is now being asked to certify that this project is in compliance with that approved document. Before you, on the dais when you arrived, is a letter from an interested party asking questions about the environmental document. Staff has reviewed it and found nothing significant to respond to. The applicant is here with his entire team. If the City Council wants to ask any specific questions regarding the environmental document, their consultant is here and prepared to answer those questions. The options before the City Council tonight are to adopt the resolution and the ordinance implementing the general plan amendment and zoning change, continue the item, ask the staff to return additional information, or to deny the project. The Planning Commission recommends option one. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Okay. Does the council have any specific questions to the staff at this time? Okay. So what I'd like to do is like to open a public hearing. Can we have the applicant or his representative come forward and provide any additional information that we might find relevant as we get into the public discussion on this topic? If you could identify yourself for the record.
Well, thank you for the time. My name is Steve Coyne, and I am the applicant. We are very excited to be here, Honorable Mayor, and esteemed council members. The project that you have as our application represents a couple of years' worth of work. In our initiation of identifying a project in Palmdale, we started with three sites, including one on the very east side of town, one in the trade and commerce area, and then this one. And after a variety of different impact research resulted in this site being the ideal site for this, this mix of uses, we came up with the plan that you see. It's very deliberate. I commend your planning staff for assisting us in that effort. The residential to our west was a concern. The initial plan had retail all the way up against the backyards of that for the entire length of it. We came in with an apartment program for half of it. We then moved to a residential program for all of it to buffer the existing residential. It's mostly two-story. We are only two-story on our side, buffering those with backyards against backyards. We do not have trash service, loading, drive-throughs, or anything up against that residential. The other thing that we did very deliberately is to try and blend the traffic together with a mix of for-sale residential, with for-rent residential, and retail, which does a really significant benefit to the residents with leveling out the peak traffic. If we were all commercial here, you would see these giant spikes of traffic throughout the day. And what we've done with for-rent has a broad range of uses, or a broad range of renters, employment-based. Some get up early, some get up at noon, some go to work at night as servers in restaurants, et cetera. Some are working the graveyard shift in some of your defense industries. What we are trying to do with this project is answer a couple of different demands. Sprouts has been in this market for years. They have really, really wanted this site, but they couldn't make it happen. We have a representative from Sprouts who will validate that. They will also validate that they love the rooftops, the existing rooftops, but also the new rooftops. We have a residential community for for-sale that is priced at a level very consistent with the other multifamily in your market. And then we have what we consider to be, what will be, the highest-end apartment community in the Antelope Valley. This will be a resort-style apartment community. From my-
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll stop the meeting if we aren't going to be polite, okay? So let's, let's give each side a fair shake here, okay?
From, from my very experience today, and I, I welcome anybody in the crowd to try and find a really nice hotel room, and by really nice, I mean $100 plus, tonight in Palmdale. My wife and I both, on my way up here, I wasn't planning to stay here tonight, but I'm headed to Bishop tomorrow for another project meeting. I called between my wife and I, eight of your communities, right here in this very area. Every one of them, 100% full. It was only by an act of your Chamber of Commerce that I was able to chip one out. So you have a need. Apartments, a very nice apartment is in high demand. Our economic research right now is showing that you have almost 2,000 units of pent-up demand. Meaning if you had 2,000 units on the market today, they would be leased up overnight. You guys know, as well as I do, in our conversations with the industry leaders, both defense and private businesses, that they are growing and they want to grow further. They are talking about 4,000 to 5,000 jobs over four to five years. So the council member Bishop and Correa both said that the Olympics are, you know, going to take an effect on the airport. There's another wave coming. It's industry. Los Angeles is out of room. Everything is going to be moving in your direction, and you guys need to answer that with high-quality housing. You need options, both townhomes, you need single-family, and you need good apartments. This apartment community and the residential community are not low-income. I assure you, the land price and construction pricing today is at a peak. The cost of getting this project together will assure that this is not an affordable housing project either. Sprouts is next door. They won't tolerate that. They want a high-end retail experience for their clientele. So our land plan is, is based on all three components interacting and working together. Again, your staff has done a very good job at helping us do that so that we have interaction, pedestrian access, vehicular access. We have apartments that are across the street from one of your largest retail centers in the valley. Recreation, entertainment, food, shopping. The 300 apartments are going to, most of those cars are going to be in the parking stalls in the apartments. They're going to walk across the street to dinner on Saturdays to the movie theater.
So one of the, one of the questions that came up had to do with, with traffic and parking, were the two questions that I have been fielding. Can you or one of your representatives address those two issues?
Well, parking shouldn't be that much of an issue. What we have here is not a, what I would consider as an Orange County-based developer to be a conventional apartment community. We have mostly single and studio apartments. This apartment community is going to be catering to millennials, not families. We do not have three-bedroom apartments. We have a very small percentage of two-bedrooms. We are appropriately parked per your code. We have a retail center that's next door providing walking amenities, and you have the Antelope Valley Mall across the street. So traffic comes to a minimum. Answering the demand of the community with the need for high-end for-rent and the need for high-end retail, this is the spot for this development. It is also a much lower impact from what is currently zoned for. But if you look at our, our retail is on seven acres. You have 43,000 feet of planned retail. It represents about 14% coverage. Standard is between 20 and 25%, with the sweet spot being somewhere around 22%. We're significantly lower than that at 14% coverage. Your zoning code allows for housing to go up to almost 50 DU. You guys wanted it almost at 40. It's not marketable in this market. We can't build a podium project with concrete parking structures and things like that. It won't work for the rents that this market will bear. So we have an on-grade product, consistent with the community. Much lower density than what is, you know, would, would normally be allowed under the code. So again, well thought out, well-planned, and a blend of uses that allow for a blend of traffic and impact.
So your, your traffic improvements out there, can you explain what's going to happen at that intersection?
Which one are you referring to, Mayor?
At 15th and Rancho Vista.
Well, the, a majority of the apartments are going to go north on 15th. And only a few will come south. I mean, Plant 42 is that direction. The other thing that I like about where the Sprouts is located is that Sprouts is meant to capture the people who are already coming down Rancho Vista to go to the thousands of homes that are out west of the freeway. So we're not adding to the traffic on Rancho Vista. We're just capturing people turning right in and then right back out to go home. They're grabbing something at Sprouts on their way home. That's a majority of what the impact of traffic will be is people who are already on Rancho Vista.
So, so I know a lot of that was, was elaborated on pretty well within the, the traffic analysis. As far as the, the improvements out there, we're going to have some road widening, we're going to have turn pockets, and we're going to be getting the buses out of the traffic lanes there?
We have a, we have a bus stop, a dedicated bus stop. There's a, currently a bus stop, but we have a dedicated turnout lane for the buses. We will have an acceleration lane for traffic coming out of the residential community to our west. We are in, we are working with the timing of the light at Rancho Vista and 15th to make that sync better with the traffic flow on Rancho Vista. Right now, 15th isn't even improved on our side of the street. It's a soft shoulder, which is surprising for a street that's adjacent to your Antelope Valley Mall. But we are going to improve that with a nice sidewalk, parkway landscaping, and a turn pocket for right and left turn. So it, it should enhance, dramatically enhance the circulation pattern while adding just a few units. By comparison to the thousands of units that are to the west, I think what we have is, is going to work very well.
Thank you.
The, I'm sorry, the incremental increase is very insignificant.
I wanted to just illustrate the fact that there is such demand for hotel space that you had a hard time finding a room to stay in tonight. That demand is generated by all of the employees that are currently working out here that don't have a place to, to live in, but have to rent hotels. And that's where a lot of these people, is that, is that what impacted your ability to get a room tonight?
Absolutely. So we have, we are, we're just about to finish our second market analysis on the demand for residential, both for-rent and for-sale. Our first one was done a year ago, and that showed that we had this big pent-up demand. The industry was growing. They were interviewing the business, the industry leaders here. They interviewed some of your staff members in economic development and, and the Chamber of Commerce. So everybody knows that that's here, and that's why you have all these brand-new hotels that are absolutely chock-full.
Right. And there were a couple of public hearings, or you reached out to the community, you had a couple of sessions. Can you elaborate on that?
We had, we had two sessions at a local middle school. We sent out over 1,400 cards to residents within about 600 feet and the entire Rancho Vista Homeowners Association. And we held two meetings, one on a week night and one on a weekend day. And we had fewer than 30 people show up to mostly, you know, oppose or question the traffic and, and the development, which is natural. You know, nobody likes change. Nobody likes this kind of increase in, in anything. But a lot of the people, we were able to convince that, you know, this is a really good thing for the community because we're going to be providing solutions. Sprouts is a great tenant for this community. You know, organic produce and, and the, and the amenities that, that surround Sprouts with, with higher-end restaurants and, and a little bit of a supplement to what the mall is offering. And then we have what will be the highest-end community. This is going to be something special in an apartment community. And I don't expect any different out of the residential builder because they're going to be coming into this, you know, knowing what they're up against.
What can you elaborate on the type of amenities that you're going to be providing to the future residents?
For the apartments? Well, one thing I should stress is that the, the townhome portion of the project will share the amenities of the apartments. Because the townhomes are just a little bit too small to provide their own. So we have decided that they should share in the amenities. So we will have a, a big clubhouse with a resort-style pool, several jacuzzis, kid tot lot for, which will probably be on the smaller end. Again, we don't expect to have families, but we will have children that will be there at some point. We have, you know, bocce ball courts, ping-pong tables, community gathering spaces, and open spaces that really will allow for the residents to not have to travel out for anything that they don't, you know, feel like they need to buy. Recreation will be held onsite. We're working right now, and our market analysis, our market analyst, I should say, is really good. We, they used to put movie theaters in the community space. Now they're talking about gaming rooms. You know, with, for the technology savvy children, millennials, but I'll call them children with my gray beard. But you know what I'm saying. We're, we're working on that. And the, the new market analysis that we're expecting in the next week or two will, will show that, that a game room is, is superior to a, a movie theater. But a restaurant-style kitchen with a clubhouse that you can reserve, a business center, a resort-style pool with cabanas, multiple jacuzzis, bocce ball courts, ping-pong tables. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about the late 20s, all through the 30s, and even early 40-year-old kind of millennial crowd needing a space, whether they're married or not, they don't want to buy. That's the new generation.
And that's the demographic of the folks that are working out at the plants?
At the plants, at Edwards, in the private sector, as I mentioned, you know, the lipics are coming, but private development, but private industry is coming your way. I know you guys know that. So we need, you guys need to embrace that growth.
So the way that property is zoned now, it's C3. And what could you build? If the zoning gets in change, what could you build there?
If you look at C3, think Rancho Vista and 10th. I mean, think the Target Center or the Walmart Center where, you know, on a Saturday, I've been here on a Saturday. You don't want to be on 10th. That's, that's what C3 is. And that's what you'd be looking at in Rancho Vista and 15th. I don't think you'll want that. I mean, you need, you need to blend those uses. I mean, short of putting a parking lot.
So as was pointed out by staff, if you have the mixed use of residential and commercial, the traffic impact is much less with this use than a C3 used if you were to develop it entirely for commercial.
Correct. It flattens out those peaks, you know, from 8 o'clock to 5 o'clock. It just flat, it flattens out all the peak flow with our blend of uses. And that's deliberate. That's, that's us trying and your staff encouraging. So.
Anything else for, do you have anything for him at this time, or are we ready to call him? Okay. Hang loose. We may have some more questions for you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, can you call the first, first speaker? And who's up after that?
Nima Karamanos.
And who's up after that?
And then we have Charles Hoig, or Hoig?
My name is Naima Karamanos, and I live in here in the City of Palmdale for 30 years. And I own a business. His name is Cookies Bribal, and I own for 28 years. And I want to bring my business and thus in this project and I support the project. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. So just to remind everybody, you got the little timer up there. And uh who's the next speaker?
That is um Charles Hoy.
Hello, sir. Can you turn the mic towards you there a little bit because there you go. Cause everybody at home and the millions of viewers out there in TV land wanna hear you too.
I'm Chuck Hoy with Charles Hoy and Associates, Commercial and Industrial Real Estate. I live in Quartz Hill at uh forty-one uh twenty-eight. And I'm approve this. I think it's, it's an excellent pro- uh project. I think it's needed. Uh I think you've got an excellent retailer coming in that every city in the Antelope Valley would want in their community. Uh I think the, the design, everything I see and heard is, is perfect for the city of Palmdale. I agree too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And who do you have next, Mr. City Clerk?
Yul Gavargas.
Yul Gavargas and then?
And then Paul Avila.
Sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. I've been a resident for fifty years and I really think this is gonna have a positive impact uh for Palmdale. I, I go to uh New Hall Ranch Road to Sprouts. Their product is always consistently good, organic, and we go shopping there. And um I also think high-end apartments and townhouses are needed at this time. As you mentioned, a lot of private industries coming, motion pictures coming that I know of, and also aerospace. Uh the only concern I have that the HOA fees will be high enough to provide for twenty-four hours gated security for these apartments and townhomes. So uh public in general just can't go hang in there. Some of the kids go there and say, oh, there are ping pong tailbills there or whatever. Or there are high-end people living here. I saw the Lamborghini pulling in there. So I really appreciate if they would consider twenty-four hours gated security. And also I'm concerned about traffic that gentleman mentioned going north on fifteen. Immediately they're gonna intersect with the stop sign at O twelve and then O eight and eventually Avenue O. I don't think you can handle that kind of traffic. So if we could improve the north side of fifteenth, so traffic will in fact go to Avenue O and then to the east to uh Tenth Street West and then to the freeway. That Fifteenth Street East by itself, I'm sorry, Fifteenth Street West by itself in Rancho Vista cannot handle any more traffic. That traffic intersection, that light.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think there's some improvements coming in there. Who was the next speaker?
That's Paul Avila.
Paul Avila? Avila.
Hey, my name is Paul Avila. I live in Palmdale, right off of uh Gemstone Avenue. And I support this uh project uh due to the uh raising the property values, you know, of our homes. You know, that's gonna help uh attract other businesses to the Antelope Valley and uh high-end retailers. See that the AV is the kind of community that they can and should invest in. So this project uh will support the Antelope Valley Mall by driving more customers to the area and bringing in new construction jobs, which are always needed. And I encourage you to vote yes on this project. Thank you.
Sir. Thank you.
Next is Tal Vinnie, Finney?
Tal Vinnie? And then? Who's that? Who's following that?
And then after that's Ma- Monica Chandler.
Okay.
After me, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
And also members. Nice to see you. I'm Tal Finney. I'm uh the former chief planner for the state of California. I was the director of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and I am Minister of SEQA for the state. And I've been retained by an unincorporated Association of Palmdale Community Residents, the Responsible Growth Palmdale Folks. Uh the membership is revealed in this uh petition that was filed with y'all. And also a letter from myself, this is incorporated together, in opposition to the project. Uh basically, the concern is that while the developer had a couple of years to look into this. There's only a few weeks of notice for the public, both at the planning level and the city council level. And while SEQA does provide a uh notice requirement, it's really a floor. And these types of matters, you really want as much public involvement as possible. And based on what the developer said about the number of folks that appeared at the two meetings they held. It didn't sound like a whole lot of folks really got the word well enough to be able to participate. There's a lot of working folks in this community, current residents. And so really what we're looking for is an opportunity to participate more in the process and learn more about the project. Uh learn what traffic studies had really been done. Cause the petition talks about it being a really large project considering the area that it's in. And that because of that, uh that's one concern, but then also it's a ne- mitigated NEG declaration, which are not being made to design or the density of the project itself. Rather the changes are sweeping zoning changes and a general plan amendment change that will greatly impact the entire area surrounding the project. Normally these things are a little tweak here or there or permit, but to have the whole general plan changed, it's, it's a big deal. And again, this might be something the community ultimately is comfortable with, but I've been approached by a whole bunch of folks that have joined this organization to say that they have these concerns. And so we would ask that the council consider that. Uh there's concerns about uh traffic, noise, health and safety, uh both during construction after the dense project is built. Uh there are other, these impacts are significant and unavoidable and the failure to consider these additional in issues renders the initial study mitigated NEG deck ineffective as an informational document. They're, they're wanting to see if an environmental impact report, which is a broader document, might be considered. But again, the main concern is that they'd be given an opportunity, maybe you consider the second option tonight of the three options that the staff presented you with. Where you maybe can uh draw out the time, like you did in one of your earlier items, to give the public a chance to, to learn more about it. Maybe continue it for sixty days to give the public time to review the initial study mitigated NEG deck and to provide comments there too. So that's uh what I've done. Again, I've presented a letter with the petition to the clerk and to all of y'all. I mean, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Who's the next speaker?
Monica Chandler.
No, 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 we wanna give everybody feel comfortable being able to speak here without, feel like they've got a crowd against them or a forum here, okay? Monica Chandler?
Yes, Mayor. I've been a resident out here for so long. It's hard to believe it. But um I started out here with a horse and it over many years ago on N twelve. And I've lived out here a long time. I've acquired some rental properties out here. I've been dealing with the public for years now. And what I'm seeing happening isn't good. I'm seeing a lot of people trying to rent nice homes. Uh and they don't have the money. They have vouchers, but they don't have money. So this is making it hard for people like myself that wanna make a decent living on rentals. And it worries me. So if somebody's coming into town and they wanna develop an area that make people proud to live here and also bring in a high-end market. I don't see how we at this point can turn it away. A year ago, I rented rooms for extra ear- income. I had Northrip come. I had Edwards Air Force people and Lockheed rent rooms for me. These are high-end uh men with a MBA or whatever, master's degree. They didn't have a place to rent. So I opened up my home. The men were very nice, but they had to put up with sharing kitchen, putting up with my dogs and this and that. If there would have been apartments on that corner or townhomes, they probably would have chose that over my residence. So I think it's time that Palmdale steps up and gets some class in this town. We were an old boy town for so long and it's needed.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm for it, but um.
Shh, shh, shh. Yul, please. Yul, please.
The other hand, I sympathize with the people that have homes next to the twenty-acre partial. And I know that. Partial, cause I live on Seventeenth behind it. If I had a home and they were putting a development, and I know this for a fact, those small windows at the top on the second story. If people can look down on you and it's in your backyard, that makes one very uncomfortable. Even though you have nothing to hide, it's like you're in a fishbowl. So I hope that uh this new project, this new development goes to the people that live along there and try to compromise with them.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, they said they were putting them up either the cellar stories tile windows so that you, you'd have to like get up on a chair or something to look down. So maybe misunderstood what they were planning on there. So yeah, they deliberately did that.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Who's the next one? Excuse me. Next one, please.
Susan Cadena.
Susan? Catalina, was it?
Cadena.
May- maybe we can, we destroy your name. If you could just say your name when you get up here and make it easier on all of us then.
Hi, I'm Susan Cadena and I've lived in Palmdale for twenty-five years. And I don't have a problem with the Sprouts going in there or the townhomes, but it's the apartments I have an objection to. Because there's no guarantee that they're not gonna become section eight. And I've seen all the apartments throughout Palmdale and I haven't seen one of them that's not section eight. Especially on, I know in the east, there's no apartments on the uh west side. And there's plenty of rentals up here, plenty of homes for rent. And, and another thing I wanted to address was the hotels being crowded through the weekdays. And that's because people drive up here that work in the aerospace, but they own homes down below. They don't wanna live up here. So that's why they rent the hotels, most of them. And um if you, you'd be taking away businesses, the hotel business too. If, for building these um apartments and townhomes. And, and one more thing, I don't know, any millennial that would, that um would wanna live up here in a, in Palmdale. My kids all couldn't wait to get out of here. So and, and that's, you know, and another thing too is the traffic. The traffic impact right there is gonna be really bad. And we have enough traffic right there for people going to work in the morning. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Debbie Cosell.
Hi there. I'm Debbie Cosell. I've lived in the community for thirty-two years. Uh first off, let me thank you Mayor Hoffbauer and council members for allowing the public to speak tonight. I was one of the original homeowners of the heritage tract. Some of the folks behind me were my neighbors and I still consider them my friends. When we purchased our home, we were told the property was in question would eventually be a strip mall. What good is doing your due diligence and research regarding the property around your home if the city throws out the general plan to change it to not only to residential, but mixed-use commercial residential and dense residential at that? When the tract was planned, we were told the homes along the north, along the north side of Wat Lane had to be single-story homes to remain good neighbors to the property owners already living in homes on Fifteenth West and O eight. What happened to being a respectful and neigh- and neighborly to people who already lived there? We have been told the development is being built with millennials in mind. That they like to eat and shop where they live and be, and walking and within walking distance to the mall meets that criteria. I find this ironic since when I lived in that neighborhood, I was of the age of today's millennials and I never walked to the mall to shop or eat. I attended the workshop presentation for the new transportation center last night. One of the many already held and planned. I have been told the strata development has been in the works for many years. If this is the case, where were the meetings to work together with those who live in the area of the development? I don't mean the two meetings held in early summer just prior to the planning commission vote when people already had vacations planned. I mean the years prior as the development was being planned. The strata development is planned for the earth already high-traffic area. Why add more traffic with three hundred and forty-four residents in a very small area? This development is planned for three point six people in each home. The average home has two drivers and two cars. That's six hundred and eighty-eight cars. There are five hundred and seventy-four spaces allowed for this area. Where are the rest of the residents' cars going to be parked? And are, and there's a hundred and fourteen and their guests going to park, not to mention all the shoppers. On the streets of the neighboring tracks. Drive by any apartment complex with inadequate parking, then drive the surrounding neighborhood and you will see where the overflow parking is. At the planning commission?
You have to wrap it up here.
Oh, uh, okay. What I say, what I am stating is that I believe that this is a, a um in my opinion, it's the wrong, wrong project for that location.
Thank you.
Jorge Nunez?
Jorge Nunez?
Let me take my glasses. Cause I have a very good message for you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Jorge Nunez. I'm a member of Salva, a community nonprofit organization that work for social and economic issues in the Antelope Valley. And also I'm a resident of Palmdale. I'm here to support this housing project that will benefit our community. With new union jobs and will help to continue developing our great city. Besides these projects, will contribute to the economy of this great city. I urge you to support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Who's he got next?
Terry Dickerhoff.
That sound familiar to anybody? Terry something? They trying to, trying to read everybody's writing over there.
My speaker in um, good evening, uh mayor, city, or city council members. I represent Sprouts Farmer's Market, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Sprouts is very excited to come into the city. They do have a lot of wonderful offerings. I um, you know, so I am here to answer any questions you may have. And thank you for my speaker card in.
Okay, so we may call on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What was his name again? The, the last name?
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Oh, it's Terry, T E R R I, last name D I C K E R H O F F.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Robert Broughton?
Yes, I'm Robert Broughton. I live on uh near Rancho Vista. I think it's um kind of not a good thing to have this particular parcel used for multi, multi-housing, multi-unit housing. If you, if you add it all up and, and you figure there's a one and a half spaces for each apartment for a car, that comes to approximately five hundred and sixteen more automobiles that are gonna be in our community. We don't need five hundred and sixteen more automobiles. That's if everybody has two cars and most everybody nowadays has two or three or four cars. The uh development, developers have really, really good ideas, but this is not Orange County. I don't believe we have a tax base that can support the same things that Orange County does. We have, we have several empty buildings around uh this area. We have Famous Staves. It's been empty for about a year. We could put a new restaurant in there if we needed other, other restaurants. We have, within a five-mile area, we have three, three or four markets. We have a um we have a uh Vons, we have uh Smart and Final, and we also have a Walmart market. That's within a five, five, five block, five, excuse me, five um mile area. We really don't need another market. Farmers markets, they got farmers markets on Thursday in Lancaster. They have farmers markets next to the winery on Saturdays. We don't need any more farmers markets. So why should we, why should we take this little bitty space and put all these apartments in a, another farmer's market in? We've got, we've got places in the mall that are empty. Why? Because we don't have the, the finance base here to support all this. So that's my, my input. Let's see. The traffic issues are gonna, gonna really do us in. We've got traffic around that mall now at Christmas and during this time of year when everybody's getting ready to go to school. You can't get anywhere. You can't get there from here. To go to the freeway, you gotta go clear down to Avenue N to get on the freeway. Otherwise you have four, four stoplights for every mile. So I think it's, I think it's ill-advised to use this particular area for these, for these items. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you.
Gary Levine, Levine, Gary Levine?
Gary Levine?
And then after that is Linda Davis. Gary Levon?
Okay. We're trying. We gotta read your handwriting, you know?
Uh good evening, mayor and that town council. Uh my name is Gary Levin. I am a uh I have a home in Rancho Vista. I also have a business in the Antelope Valley Mall, as does my wife. And I see this project as something beneficial to the community. I've been in this town ever since uh I've been in this town ever since, it's going to my thirtieth year now. And all I've seen, people coming into this town, bringing down to town. Section Eight, City of Los Angeles, putting people on Metro Lincoln coming in. And this developer is offering us a chance to bring, which I look at will probably be corporate housing. And as far as the mall, the mall right now has plans to bring in new businesses, which you probably know about already. So it's gonna-
Don't tell them who it is. Don't tell them.
No, no, I, I don't know who it is either, but, but I could see right now the mall, if you ever go there, okay, it is a bunch of lowlife in there now. Businesses, businesses right now in the mall, they need better people. And I'd love to see our politicians just come in and see what shops in the mall too. But this will bring better people into the area and it will increase business to the mall and it will increase tax money coming into the city. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Davis?
Linda Davis?
And then after that is Michael Rivas.
Good evening, my name is Linda Davis and I've been, I have lived up Harris for forty-seven years. So I remember Rancho Vista Avenue P stopped at Thirtieth and they flew the airplanes at the end where Vons is. I have, I have lived, I'm an original owner of the Harris on the west side for, I've lived there for thirty-seven years and, and have enjoyed it. And it was, it's a wonderful neighborhood. But the problem is, is that, um, we cannot get out of our neighborhood. We, it's like a freeway, Rancho Vista, they, because there is no, um, uh, driveways, the speed limit is six, is sixty miles an hour. We have no, we have to wait, thank goodness. You put a left-hand turn for, for people that were going towards the freeway to make a left-hand turn up Fifteenth. That is the only time we have any time to get across and go across and get over to the other side going towards the west, or towards the east, excuse me. So it's very dangerous for us. I, I, two years ago, I worked with the planning commission and tried to work with them and saying, if anything is gonna happen, our neighborhood needs a signal. Because that's the only way that we can get out and turn left and get out without going. We, I've had to sit in the middle of the two yellow lines and my car is going like this because the cars are passing us at sixty miles an hour. You're sitting in the middle of a freeway. And you have to wait to get over. So I'm asking you, my main concern is, okay, I'm gonna say this, is the cars, the amount of cars in that Fifteenth. I hear accidents all the time on Fifteenth and Rancho Vista. You hear the sirens going all the time. The noise level and the lights that are gonna be shining on our neighborhood. We, I enjoy the stars. We have a nice calm neighborhood. All that bright light, the mall is far enough away on the other side of Fifteenth where the lights don't come right into our yards. With all this development and these two stories, they should, if they're gonna do it, they gotta go one story. Because when I bought there, we were promised that that was gonna be a single housing, you know, single-development housing project. That was what that was then. And two years ago, the planning commission changed it to commercial. And we fought him and fought him and fought him, but they just said, I had a commission, I had a planning commissioner say, "My housing tract is a mistake." And I had been living there for thirty years, thirty-some years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael Rivas?
Michael Rivas?
It's Michael Reeves. Mayor, Councilman, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I want to thank the council for the support for BYD and its manufacturing in Lancaster, which may be impacted by federal legislation. Thank you. Tonight I come before you to give an opinion on this Sprouts store project. I spend a lot of time shopping at the mall in, in stores nearby. I have my car repaired, my dentist is in Palmdale, I attend meetings here, I'm here two or three times a week. I also have some interest in property in the Long Beach Lakewood area. And near the intersection of Carson and Woodruff, there were some townhouses put up in a residential area and down the street is the Sprouts Market. And I wish the council could see how those townhouses stick out like a sore thumb in a residential area. Palmdale is a beautiful city. It is well-managed, the roads are being repaired, the housing is relatively new and the schools are nice. I've been to Highland High School to participate in a cancer relay there. I believe the area around Fifteenth Street West in Rancho Vista will be impacted by developing apartments and townhouses. A Sprouts store would be a good fit, but the housing would be detrimental. I don't want Palmdale to experience the problems that Lancaster has. I see it happening if three hundred and eight apartments are constructed. If they are not affordable, they will be leased out to Section Eight tenants at double the asking rent. There is ample housing in the Antelope Valley if you can get a realtor. Look at the value of press that all the homes and condos sold weekly in the valley. I would like the council to postpone rezoning for sixty days. I would like to see Saturday morning meetings with everyone involved to discuss this project from scratch. Costly, time-consuming, yes to both, but it's only a fair decent thing to do. Otherwise, there will be litigation involving this, which will begin and be ongoing. This is the time for full participation and discussion. Because we're talking about our most prized possession, other than our families, our homes in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Betty Sutherland and then after that Donna Acevis. So Betty Sutherland-
Betty Sutherland and Donna Acevis.
Betty Sutherland, I live at fifteen fifteen West Avenue O eight, right in the corner. And I'm a little nervous. I have, I have a little history with you guys at the city of Palmdale. When you guys were gonna put in the theater, everything changed. There was supposed to be a Macy's or something that was gonna go in there and all of a sudden, we just, you guys decided you were gonna put in a theater. And I fought and fought because I didn't want all the traffic going by my house. And since I'm on the corner right at the stop sign, we get at, right now, what we're getting, and ever since the theater went in, we get ricers doing burnouts on the two lanes going eastbound on O eight from the stop sign. We get people doing loops in the middle of the night when the movie lets out at two in the morning. They set off all the car alarms going by so fast. You even get drifting in the mall, okay? I was told that you guys were gonna take care of traffic and that everything would be fine. I even asked you to put up trees and you can thank me for all those big beautiful trees because I fought so that we would get some kind of sound protection and I didn't have to look at the back of a movie theater. So I'm all about doing upper-end units. I'm a little nervous about three hundred and eight apartments right down the street from my house. And I guarantee you, the traffic gets so bad on Rancho Vista that what happens? They all come right past my house. And the other problem is, city of Palmdale owns the southeast corner of that intersection. Everything else on the north of the center line of O eight and the west of Fifteenth is all unincorporated LA County. And the roads right now basically suck. They really do. You should drive down there.
I do, and one of those cars driving past her.
The frost heaves are so bad that it shakes the heck out of your vehicle.
Because I don't drive down Rancho Vista.
So my question to you guys is, what are you gonna do this time to work with LA County? Number one, to get the roads fixed? And I don't want a signal at the corner of Fifteenth and O eight because then you're gonna start encroaching on my property. Then you're gonna have Ricky Racers all night long at the signals. And there's no, there's no patrol at all, none at all. I've had people parked behind my dumpster with car covers over their cars. I've had to call the sheriff to get, to have somebody come out and figure out what's going on. You guys need to work with LA County and you need to come up with some kind of plan to make sure that our neighborhoods aren't destroyed. Anything besides Fifteenth and O eight is all private roads and the people who live on them have to pay for all that. And nobody's mentioned anything at all. And by the way, we got notification, I think we're within six hundred feet, about Sprouts. Nobody, I found out from my neighbor two days ago that we were gonna get three hundred and eight apartments down there. I never got any notification whatsoever, or I would have been at those neighborhood meetings. So I believe that we need more notification and maybe you should postpone it for a minute or two.
Thank you.
And hopefully you'll do a better job this time for us than the last.
So right, right back there, that gentleman is the police chief right there? I want you to talk to him about some of those racing problems over there. We are working with the county to try to address some of those issues, but he needs to hear it from you firsthand.
The CHP patrols LA County and Sheriff is-
Talk to him because that's exactly why we have him here at this meeting. And, I'm sorry.
Donna Acevis.
Mrs. Acevis? Right.
Hello, my name is Donna Acevis and I live in that Dover residence, right next to where you're going to build. And I'm very concerned, I oppose this. I am not opposed to Sprouts, I am not opposed to townhomes. But when I first bought my home over twenty-one years ago, I had the understanding that both empty lots were zoned for single-family homes. So our neighborhood is quiet and tranquil. I'm concerned about the increased noise we will have to deal with from the delivery trucks, car stereos, horns, and twenty-four-hour flow of vehicles from Gal Taco. We have dealt with them all, but even that closes at a certain hour and helps provide quiet sleep. So I'm also concerned about my property value. I'm concerned that it will go down. With parking overflow problems, we'll probably head into our neighborhood. Many people do not want to live next door to an apartment complex. And this one is a three hundred and eight-unit complex that will raise traffic issues. Plus probably jaywalking as people are trying to pass or go to the mall. And I was raised in a single-story, I mean, sorry, single, one-bedroom house with four siblings and two parents in one room. I know it can be done, so there may be a lot more congestion than what you guys are considering. So I want to see the responsible growth of my city. But I have lost my trust to purchase next to an empty lot because a city can change the zoning. So how does this help the growth of Palmdale if people have to be concerned when they purchase a home next to empty lots that were zoned for single-family homes? And twenty years later, it can change. So we have so many empty lots out here. I don't see why you can't develop something like this somewhere else so it doesn't affect a residence. According to the plan, it looks like the townhomes are planned to go against the wall to help our neighborhood, but it looks like it's only gonna help half of our neighborhood, not the whole wall. So I'm very concerned about that. So I'm deeply concerned about this large project reducing my quality of living for my neighbors. And I'm concerned about the traffic, the noise, the pollution, the bright lighting, the parking overflow into my neighborhood and property value decrease. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Do you have next?
Yes, Jeffrey Ames and Kit Bennett.
Jeffrey Ames and Kit Bennett?
It's actually Jeffrey Allen Ames, but I'll go with Jeffrey Allen right now. I'm one of those millennials that you guys are all discussing that would be opposed to actually living out here in the Antelope Valley their whole life. I've, I actually was born and raised right here in the Antelope Valley. I've seen everything change. I've seen new housing tracts go up, I've seen Walmarts pop up overnight and I am fully supporting this development for both, both of them. I strongly support the Sprouts coming to the Antelope Valley and I support this apartment complex coming just as well. I mean, there's nothing wrong with living here in the Antelope Valley. As a millennial saying that, I love that Disneyland is two hours from here. I love that Six Flags is forty-five minutes from here. I get to come back to my safe haven and live here. And I hate that I do have to go to LA or to New Hall to shop at a Sprouts. It's a beautiful thing to bring to our community, especially these affordable apartments. I think this is an opportunity for Palmdale to have something that is unique and different than what we've already been experiencing. I mean, we have the low-income apartments. Let's try something better. I've seen everything change and I've seen it change for the better. So I strongly urge you to support this project. I mean, we will work with every single complication that could arise. I would love to see something better happen for our community.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Kit Bennett.
Wait, can you get up here so that-
Hello, I'm Kit Bennett. I have read this one hundred and sixty-five-page report and I have seen the blueprints in my hand. I am not a civically-involved person. This is the first time I've ever attended a city council meeting in my life. I feel highly inspired to be here tonight because this is an epic disaster. The reason I'm saying this is because this land is already zoned for commercial use among our single-family homes. The community will support business and retail, but high-density housing is way too much for this little parcel. I did not know about the history of the zoning, about how it was actually originally slated for single-family homes. The, in this document, worst-case scenario, is an increase of one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight new residents at this location. Now you can't tell me that this isn't gonna significantly impact the crime and the traffic of our community. The school traffic for summer winds is substantial. I was almost killed at that intersection. It is nothing to be messed with. Now I think we can all agree that the aerospace economy in this town is doing great. That's fantastic. I'm married to an aerospace engineer. I'm one of the many people that moved here for the industry. Now, we have to also think ahead about not just in good times, but also in bad times. The economy does turn back every now and then. What's gonna happen when the jobs dry up and there will be an abundant vacancies? Can any one of you give the community a written guarantee that these vacancies are not gonna be turned into Section Eight? Any one of you?
Actually, the state requires it. You can't deny that. So, anybody, so, I mean, we keep having that discussion.
It's a tough question, I get it. And if I was a politician, I would not want to answer that question.
I just did.
Good for you. Please keep in mind the vote tonight is also jeopardizing the property values of thousands of homes in this area. I want to tell you about the story about my friend Philip. He was looking to buy and he asked his local police officer friend, "Hey, any advice for me?" And he said, you know, "Notice the areas where there are apartments. Avoid those neighborhoods because that's where the crime is." It makes sense. More people, more crime, more congestion. We don't need that here, we have enough at the mall. I have alternatives if you don't mind me suggesting a few options.
So, we're gonna have to wrap up.
Okay. Why not build high-density housing adjacent to the aerospace companies? Or build near other existing apartment buildings already zoned for that? Or, in keeping with the spirit of what the developer intended, where he wanted to keep a living space where residents could walk to businesses, why not go to the vacant lot near Walmart? It's wide open, you're not gonna impact any single-family homes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Adam Friedman and John Camden?
Do those names sound familiar? There you go.
Counsel, my name's Adam Friedman. I'm a resident of Palmdale for the last six years. I'm also a landlord of eleven years in Long Beach and I have a question of the people-
No, no, you're addressing us.
Okay, of the people here tonight, who has cleaned up thousands and thousands of pounds of trash out of their front yard?
Okay, well, sir, you're addressing us.
It's a relevant question because as a landlord, I'm in an area with high-density multi-units much like this in Long Beach. And I have to pick up feces, hypodermic needles, crack pipes, alcohol. All this is thrown into the yard, okay? Um, I have had a neighbor who um saw someone who had been stabbed and is squirting blood everywhere. And um, tried to go to the police and the police say, "Are you the victim?" And she says, "No," and it's, and they say, "If there's no victim, there's no crime," okay? So three blocks uh over, a woman, uh, I don't wanna give her name, but um she was cleaning her section of the street, much like I have to. And she was shot because she was just in the wrong place at the wrong time. Um, now this is like three blocks over, okay? My point is, is that there is a single-family residence community that was there. In the 1960s, the city council was deeply irresponsible in destroying those single-family community by putting in this high density. Now, the problem is, is that it's distributed victims. In other words, all these people suffer 3:00 AM fireworks, 2:00 AM fireworks, 4:00 AM fireworks, M80s. These illegal fireworks, they're going off at all hours of the night. They make everybody's lives miserable. They can't leave their house because there's people parked in front of their driveway, okay? At 6 o'clock in the morning, they're trying to go to work. They can't do that. I get, I get contacted by people all the time. "Are you moving?" I've been driving around for 45 minutes looking for a parking spot, okay? And then you, you go, you talk about the city council and the plans that developers have for these high-rise buildings. And there's nowhere near the needed parking, okay? So it's already incredibly dense and there's not the parking. And somehow the city, not this city council, but that city council, has tried to push through those plans against the will of the residents in the area. My point is, is this is deeply irresponsible. There is plenty of land to build a nice development for residential. And there is that land that could be used for sprouts and other businesses. Do the responsible thing. Don't destroy Palmdale.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to remind you guys to make sure that we have Speaker slips in and the city clerk will call you. Who do you have next?
John Camden, I believe. Kenji, okay.
Okay. Council members, ma'am. Good evening. Uh, I'm gonna take this kind of little two different directions. If you guys don't know, I'm the business agent with Ironworkers Local 433. I'm also a delegate to the LAOC Building Trades, who are a uh, we represent 140,000 skilled trade and skilled workforce. You know, we have state-registered apprentices through all the crafts, whether it's sprinkler fitting, ironwork, pipe fitting, labors. We are a trained and skilled workforce and we are competitors. Uh, just going off the developer, I just wanted some points that I picked up. We're talking about growing community. We love infrastructure. We are growing out here and we need to find more housing. So we are about housing. Um, obviously sprouts for the community. Talking about high-quality housing, high-end retail, largest development in the valley. I guess the one thing I didn't hear is what promise do we have working the community? The ironworkers in the last three years because of the solar work and also the community workforce agreements that you guys have approved and also Lancaster, promises that we would be putting the community to work. Ironworkers have brought in 200 people from the anti-recidivism, the minorities. If you guys didn't know, we had an open house and Steve, you were there. We have a relationship with Youth Build Charter School. We actually share a building now. We've recruited from the Charter Schools, the college. We actually have our training courses up here so our guys don't have to travel into Orange County for our school, San Bernardino. We have training. We actually use the weld chop to train our apprentices to get those weld certifications so that our contractors can have that skilled, trained workforce. That was one thing that was mentioned I haven't heard tonight. What promise do we have to put our community to work? And one thing that these uh agreements do, obviously puts community to work, keeps the money in town as an investment, gives the work of class a fair wage. Career opportunities, like I said, and I want to give more opportunities from the people here. That's my promise to youth being in this community. I want to bring guys, this guy does not go on an agreement, I cannot recruit. The building trades cannot recruit. You guys are familiar with the MC3 program we have going. Vin Stino was here earlier. We want to bring those guys in. Without this being on an agreement, that doesn't happen. This community doesn't grow. And what's gonna happen? People say whatever. Contractors come in here and you know, Juan, we all know. They come in here, they pay a guy 15, 20 bucks an hour, no health benefits. No health benefits, no retirement. They use a man. When they're done with him, they, the contractors go in, use our money. And that man gets cheated. I recruit these. These guys come to me for a career opportunity all the time. And that's a fact. And right now, without this being on a community workforce agreement, this is what it's set up to do. So two things. One, I will support this, my guys, and the building trades will support this if this goes under an agreement. With the promise, work our community. If it does, does not, we cannot support it. We want to build, we want to build Palmdale. Give us that opportunity, please.
Thank you. Would you have, no, no, we're trying to not do that, so give everybody a fair feeling here, so. Uh, who'd you have next?
So next is David Norris and Richard Norris.
Okay. Other than the Norris brothers. You still got my car?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is David Norris. As a Palmdale businessman and a longtime resident of the Alamo Valley, I'm here to support every aspect of this project. Um, I've heard a lot of stories here today and I had a short little script and it caught up, it got me going on different uh topics. Um, a couple, as a businessman, I'm working with a lot of people and they are um constantly speaking, or I'm constantly speaking with them. And they're either gonna move away or they don't want to live in the Alamo Valley because they don't have the infrastructure, the housing, or the uh resources to live here. Um, I've grown up here pretty much my whole life, went to San Diego. It was hard to move back here. You know, we don't have, we didn't have the, we don't have sprouts. We don't have a lot of the great things San Diego, San Diego has besides the weather. But uh, I'm proud of being in the Alamo Valley now. I live here, I work here. Um, I believe the Alamo Valley has a strong economy and a great community, however, we're lacking in certain areas compared to other great communities, which I believe this project can satisfy. The Sprouts Project is exactly the kind of opportunity that we need here to support our growing community and provide more diverse selections of organic foods. In addition to the supermarket, it will help attract and retain quality workers and businesses to our community through new jobs, retail opportunities, and residences. It's a, it's companies like Sprouts that will bring value to our economy and community. Um, my dad probably killed me for this, but pardon my French on that. You know, my brother jokes about the Alamo Valley. He jokes about being from Palm Tucky. You know, that's kind of the uh stigma that we have. You know, we have the Afroman song Palmdale. That's what people reference our community. We're the high desert. We don't have everything that gets great. But uh, we love working here and living here. I can tell you, uh, eight to 10 years ago, when I came back from college, moved out from my parents, I had a problem finding an apartment or a place to live that was once safe and a great place to be. Fortunately, I found one that worked out and I'm now a homeowner in this Alamo Valley. But we still had that problem and I think this project will satisfy that. So the Sprouts Project will not only help the Alamo Valley, but Palmdale, and bring a greater value to what we do and live here. So I urge you to support this.
Thank you, sir. How do you do that, Mr. Norris?
How do you do? I was, we were gonna be like Bill. I am Richard Norris, resident of Palmdale.
I think we should uh recognize that you are a former city council member as well and we work on the council together.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I've listened to both arguments at the, from the dais before and on it. And I've heard all of the, "We need to delay this for 60 days for CEQA," and then all the arguments that come with it. It's always delay, delay, delay. One of the things that Mr. Gordon did not cover was a very strong engine in this city. And that's the hospital. And the hospital just recently uh put out a press release that we are going to begin labor and delivery next year. We're looking at building behavioral tower for medical, behavioral services. We have doctors that make considerable amount of money. We have medical staff nurses that make six figures. We also have, as you know, under the Family Practices Act, we can't hire doctors. We have to do everything by contract. So we have to contract for the ER doctors. We have to contract for the uh, uh, anesthesiologists. And then we have to provide the nursing staff by the one ratio. They make good money. Many of them are under contract and they come up here for four, maybe five days. They have to live in a hotel. They're tired of hotels. They want a nice place to live. And that is what this project brings. The upscale housing that the medical staff can afford to pay. They can afford to live and it's convenient for all of them, not just some of them. So I think it's a, it's a mute argument. I didn't, you know, the, the uh hospitals, uh, UHS says, "Oh, we can't come out and endorse this program." But we have been looking at this problem for many, many years. We need to recruit more doctors. We need to recruit more medical staff. They make good money and they can afford upscale housing and apartments. They don't want to live on Q. They don't want to live on 9th Street East. They don't want to live on 5th Street East. They want to live in nice units and that's what this project brings. But I wasn't gonna say anything tonight. I'm proud of my son. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Norris, what is your position with the hospital at Palmdale Regional?
I'm the chairman of the board of Palmdale Regional. But because we can't do it officially, I'm not here officially.
You just have to reference purposes.
I, I, I firmly believe, as you know, I've been a long-term resident of Palmdale. I care about this city. I care about the economic development engine that we try to promote. You know, worked for years to bring an airline. These are the things that, that I as an individual are dedicated my life to make this a better place. And that's, that's what I'm all about.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I got a similar uh, similar contact from Dick Wall over there. Richard Wall, you're uh, you're um CEO over there? We had a similar conversation the other day, as, as you did just there. Yes, sir, we just had a similar conversation with Richard Wall.
Not Richard Wall, Dick Allen.
Dick Allen, I'm sorry, on that same topic. So uh, we've had, we've had that conversation about the, about that need from him as well.
We need this project and we need it now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk?
That is it.
Okay, we are 40 minutes past the break, so we're gonna take a quick break here.
We close the public session.
So yeah, we'll close public hearing at this time.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Okay, motion to second on favor? Aye? Okay, we're gonna take a break. We'll come back in about uh five, six minutes, so um get in line in the. I think we officially read that in.
It was read in.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, so we have a motion to introduce that ordinance and did he write into the record? You have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to second?
It's a voice vote.
Do it, okay. That's a motion to introduce the ordinance, so.
Voice vote.
Voice vote. Okay, all in favor, please uh indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so I've taken a few notes here and I'm gonna ask the planning manager to address some of the concerns that came up. Uh, so um, most of the, most of the comments we were getting were revolved around parking, uh, traffic. Those are probably the, the two top ones. There are a number of other ones, uh, delivery truck timings and things of that nature. But could we, uh, could you please, please um reiterate or extrapolate on or call uh the relevant expert uh for, to, to answer uh or address the issue on the traffic issues and on the parking for the uh, for the.
Sure. The project meets the current uh parking for the residential component of the project. The only modification to parking is in the commercial component. And uh, that difference is only for the restaurants. The uh standard for parking in Palmdale is four spaces per thousand for standard retail. It's one per 100 for restaurants. The proposal is to change the restaurant standard to one for every 110 square feet instead of 100 square feet. So it's a very minor change and it's only for the restaurants.
Is that because it contemplates uh shared parking within the uh, within the parking area?
It's, it's straight parking analysis. Uh, they're, they're proposing. Uh, fortunately, the city council reduced the parking standard for apartments just before this project uh came to you. So it uh, the, the city changed its standards to one and a quarter per uh studio. Uh, one and a half for a one-bedroom apartment and then two and a quarter for everything above that. And that uh matches what the developer's proposing at this site.
Okay.
Uh, they break it down slightly differently. They break out um, uh residential parking and uh guest parking separately. But when you add it all together, it ends up to be the same.
Okay. And then on the, on the traffic impact issues?
If I can go back to the uh PowerPoint, let's see here. Pretty sound? So this is the uh breakdown of total parking or traffic demand. Uh, the proposed project compared to a project if it was 100% commercial. Um, we extrapolated to be about 128,000 square foot uh shopping center on this size of a parcel. And as you can see, basically, the total number of trips is about in half. For technical questions, for roadway improvements and uh traffic safety, I'd defer that to the city engineer.
All right. Uh Chuck, can we get you up here real quick? Rob's not giving up his seat. He's gonna make you stand. So can you um, um, some of the questions that have come up have to do with um, what, what the, what are we doing with the cross-section, for example, on 15th? What are we doing on Rancho Vista Boulevard? And can you, and then with the addition of the uh, um, bus turnouts, uh, what's that gonna do to uh impact or improve the traffic situations over there? Can you explain that one to us a little bit?
Well, I think uh, I think I will defer to Bill Padilla. Bill's the city traffic engineer and I think he'd probably be better to answer that. I know what the cross-sections are, but as far as the effect on traffic and things like that, that would probably be better answered by him.
All right, so then strictly from that perspective, what are we looking at for, what are we changing the, what are we adding into the streets over there?
Well, it'll be, the, I mean, it's gonna be a standard street, but then you're gonna have the bus turnouts, obviously, that'll be there. On 15th Street, it'll be, uh, there will be um no right-turn pocket, but at some point in the future, the right, the dedication is there, is gonna be there. So right-turn pocket could be installed at some point in the future when it's needed.
Okay. All right, Bill? So, so right now, we've got bus stops on 15th and we've got bus stops on Rancho Vista Boulevard.
Yes.
And right now, and, and I share the residents' concerns about the traffic congestion that we have between the ill-timed lights that Caltrans controls. But the fact that we cut down 33% of our traffic lanes with buses stopped out on the street, what happens with this project? What happens with this project over there?
You look at the intersection of Rancho Vista Boulevard and Fifteenth Street West, going westbound, after you cross the intersection of Fifteenth Street West, this development was required to provide a right turn lane separate from the through lanes to access this development. In that right turn lane, the buses won't be able to stop. So they'll be stopping without impeding the true traffic. You familiar with Ten Street West, when you go northbound from Rancho Vista, the bus stops there before actually furniture store and they block the traffic. That won't be the case in right here for for buses. So they have their own, the right turn lane will be used as a bu- as a bus stop. The intersection is a traffic signal. They had to improve the west side of the intersection, Fifteenth Street West, along the property frontage. They will provide the right turn lanes, curb guards and sidewalks. So we fully develop all the way pretty much close to the entrance to the mall where the Sears auto service store is. So they're gonna develop all the way to O twelve. There'll be curb guards and sidewalks, full uh street dedications. Now, keep in mind now, the city receive a grant and they're improving Rancho Vista Boulevard from Fifteenth Street West all the way to Thirtieth West. And right now, it's a four-lane roadway, west of Fifteenth Street West, and there'll be a six-lane roadway. So when they widen the lane.
That's our that's our gap funding to 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 finish widening that out.
Correct, this is uh in September, October, we'll start the construction of that development. So all the area west of the residential subdivision that the residents uh are here today, west from there, there'll be curb guards and sidewalks and there'll be six lengths. Where the churches and Twenty Street West, they'll be all developed, from Twenty West all the way to the park will be developed. So right now, it's a four-lane roadway, there'll be a six-lane roadway, which will reduce congestion quite a bit. Intersections are intersections where the school starts, it's congested. I mean, there's there's nothing you can do when school starts in summer wind. If a peak hour for fifteen minutes is hell, pretty much, you know, it's a lot of traffic, so.
It's very school, yeah.
But the level of services is uh in like the table they show, you know, if it was commercial, with more than seven thousand trips, uh this mixed use is half the the trips. Now, the Rancho Vista has the capacity for all the traffic. Six-lane roadway cre- creates a lot uh has a lot of capacity. It's more congested, yes, so we can avoid that. The city plan, when we develop a city, we do a traffic model. And that traffic model decides how many lanes we need to have in the roadways for ultimate build-out. This is not ultimate build-out, so we have capacity. Right now, Rancho Vista, west of Thirtieth West, it's a four-lane. We have the room for six-lane, but we haven't strapped that because uh it's not time to do that yet.
Don't wanna be going in and out.
No, there's 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 no need right now, so yeah, it'd be more congestion, yes, but we have the capacity in in the roadway. Now, the other issue, of course, exiting Dover Drive is an issue. Uh usually, the sequence of development that we do of improvements is restricting the left turns out because our primary concern is safety of the residents. You know, it's nice to have a le- a full access from uh from a collector road from the residential street to a major arterial like Rancho Vista. In this case, you can do restrictions like no left turns and only allow the westbound rights, eastbound lefts. You know, so we have like instead of the three movements, four movements, you know, allow three movements, so. Or a traffic signal usually is no warrant, that's why we block the left turns out of out of this type of development. The Rancho Vista gap project that we have right now, several of the streets along Rancho Vista will be restricted from those left turns coming out of there because the congestion is increasing Rancho Vista, so we need to restrict the left movement. And this area, the subdivision is about eighty homes, so it won't won't meet a warrant for a traffic signal. Uh so.
So notwithstanding whether anything goes in there or not, we're still gonna have to look at what our traffic movements are west of uh Fifteenth, no matter what we do.
Usually, what we do, the sequence is we start having issues for people coming out of there, we have to restrict the left turn movements, which is the most difficult movement from any subdivision to a main roadway. And of course, with so many years from the residents driving, making that left turn, if you restrict them, that's not a people won't be too happy, but that's.
Well, let's look at the at the signal timing to see if we can improve that before we take that step.
Oh, no, no, we we work in that, so uh we work in the signal timing with that, so. I don't know what else, uh any other items?
Anything else for the traffic engineer?
There was a a comment made, uh at least by one person, maybe more, that Rancho Vista Boulevard is a freeway, that there's excessive speeds along there. What could be done, if in fact that's an accurate statement, to mitigate that issue? Do ha- have any tra- have any uh speed studies?
Let me just, Bill, Bill knows this is a topic near and dear to my heart. So last time we had traffic concerns brought up on Rancho Vista Boulevard, traffic department went out there and they did the speed surveys out there.
That's what I wanted to know.
Right, and the speed and the speeds went up. So because the cars are already driving so fast. So it seems like almost a dichotomy there, and you have so much traffic and so much speed, but that's the way the this the the state uh traffic modeling requires us to do that and for the speeds to be enforceable in court. So I've had this, I've gone down this whole road with these guys, and we ended up having speeds go up on Rancho Vista Boulevard and on Bowles Ranch Road both when last time they did speed surveys out there, so.
So basically, if you, when we do the speed survey study, we need to go with eighty-five percent. Eighty-five percent of the people, which are the residents, actually, the residents that are complaining are driving at the speed limits that we set. It's just, it's the their own residents. Uh and 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 sometimes, you know, you get a ticket, you know, and you find that the the ticket, the survey will show that eighty-five percent of the people, the speed survey was correct, and the court will hold the.
Right, but that seems to support the point that was made that uh the automobiles are traveling so fast through there that they have a hard time moving out of their own neighborhood. I mean, what can be done to improve that that situation, aside from this project here?
Well, for for this area there, you know, just restriction of the left turn movement from Dover Drive, that'd be the best, the safer thing to do. But it's an impact to the neighborhood, but that's you, safety is is of main concern, right? So traffic will go whatever, congestion actually will dictate the speed limits in the future. Congestion will get will get worse and the speed limit will go down. That's pretty much what's gonna happen. The more development that happens on the west side of town, the speed limits will start going down.
We're already seeing that the speed slowing down a little bit further west of there just because everybody's turning in and turning out and 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 moving with the.
In a couple of years, we'll be uh starting the next set of survey for citywide, and we'll see the 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 changes.
All right.
I still I still believe that traffic, traffic may be a problem with the amount of units that are going in. I know uh I know during the sometimes during the day and and most of the time during the weekends, uh Rancho Vista and Ten Street West is is pretty busy. Would you say that's one of the busiest intersections in our city?
That's correct.
So that is the busiest intersection in the city?
Rancho Vista and Ten Street West, Sierra Highway, Rancho Vista, and some of the intersections in Palmdale Boulevard.
And that worries me, because I believe it can have an impact on the quality of life for existing residents. I know I travel that road frequently myself, and I wouldn't wanna have any more traffic or any more delays than there are currently. I know I was going down the fourteen headed southbound this weekend and the Ten Street West exit where you get off and right by the mall, it was it it backs up, and it backs up really bad. Backs up way beyond the freeway.
You know, you know why that happens, though?
I'm aware, there's a lot of traffic.
No, that's because it's because couch.
There's cars.
Caltrans, Caltrans has the traffic signals at the ramps disconnected from the traffic management system from the city, so they, this happened back in the Schwarzenegger administration, so they can account for the maintenance time. So you have fiber optic that can coordinate all those signals, and it's literally dangling like this inside that control box over there. And we've taken up with every state legislator since uh since Schwarzenegger's been in office, and you know, the pecking order of city, county, state, and God, then there's Caltrans and UP. So we we we've been trying to get that thing put back into the system, but it's also why those ramps are being widened. And it's also, in talking with the traffic department, we've asked, what what's the problem other than the signal timing, what else contributes to the traffic over there? And it's the buses that are sitting there, taking up uh literally thirty-three percent of our traffic capacity is buses sitting there. And that's become a problem about the last ten, fifteen years, because the mall kicked them out of the buses out of the mall, for the most part. So we're in the process of, we've already got a general agreement with the mall to be able to bring those buses back into the mall, so they're not stopping on Ten Street West and they're not stopping on Rancho Vista Boulevard, because that that's right there, you just you you just increase your traffic capacity by a third.
But to answer your question about traffic, remember I mentioned that there's a project right now to in add a lane in each direction, Rancho Vista Boulevard. So right now, in Ten Street West, Rancho Vista, you have six lanes, and then it narrows down to four lanes, west of Fifteenth Street West. The project we're working now in the next three months, now you have six lanes from Fifteen West all the way to Thirty Street West, all the way to Fiftieth. So we're gonna increase the capacity by one-third, so that's a solution for the congestion you you working.
Does that help the throughput?
Yeah, be one-third, yeah, with one lane in each direction, so you're gonna add, you know, this one-third of the so you're gonna add capacity quite a bit. Then in Ten Street West, there's another project we're working with Caltrans, it'll take a little longer, probably three to four years uh for all the studies that are required. Ten Street West, north of Ran- a little bit like five hundred feet south of Ran- uh Rancho Vista Boulevard, all the way to O eight, and there'll be a eight-lane roadway. So we're working to improve the ramp from the fourteen southbound to exit to Ten Street West. And then on Ten Street West, from Rancho Vista Boulevard to O eight, when that right now is a six-lane. We're working, we have a grant for about twenty million dollars to improve that area to make it eight lanes. And that's the most congested part of the city, so we're working on it to increase capacity.
Okay.
So.
I would hope that also that we can get with Caltrans and hopefully get that light synced in time with the prod- project, because I don't wanna see more cars backing up.
Call Newsom, I don't know what to tell you, I mean, we've been been killing ourselves on this thing for years. Um, any other questions of traffic engineer?
No.
Okay, um, thank you. So this is our, we got, um, so we talk up, there was some question about empty restaurants and markets. Those aren't his restaurants or markets, and many of those places are still getting paid because the corporate's still paying them. So that's why when you go down to the old bonds, that's not gonna get filled for years yet, because bonds is still paying for that. So you got that, that's a crazy thing that happens, but they're stuck with the lease. So um as long as they put a four-lease sign in front of the place, um, that's what happens. Um, what else have we got here? Delivery trucks, Rob, can you address uh uh where our deliveries occur and what that, what we're looking at there?
Yes, the uh project is designed to buffer the existing residents with more residents along the common property line to the west of the project site. The loading dock for the Sprouts Restaurant is at the rear. Uh trucks will come in off of Rancho Vista, make their uh delivery, and then go back out. Um, the inline shops have rear service doors here, and the restaurants will be receiving their goods from the front.
Okay, and then, so the the townhouses are what's in the bottom right-hand corner here, and the carriage houses, which are basically just more are townhouses, but they're more squat, those are along that other boundary along there where the arrow is now, okay.
Those are units over garages.
Right.
The parking's underneath those units.
Okay, um.
Is it your sense that the privacy concerns of the residents that are west of this project has been attended to in terms of uh this development?
Yes, we've been very careful with window placements uh to minimize that. Um, the existing single-family neighborhood is a combination of single and two-story homes, and we have nothing taller than a two-story unit all along that property line. So if we had single-family being built there, you'd have two-story houses with the same view. Uh actually, uh they'd have more of you, because we wouldn't be controlling the window placement as we have on this project.
Okay, so to the concern that was raised by one of the residents that people would be able to look down on the property that's west of them, is that a concern?
Well, some of my friends that are six-five will uh be looking out those windows fairly easily. Uh I would be needing a step stool to do so.
But normal height people.
So the window height is six foot five, is that what you're saying?
The uh the the windows sales are six feet high on those clear-story windows that face due west. The windows that face north and south, um you can see on the property that these walls are articulated. So when you've got the walls that's facing south or facing north, they'll have a full-size window. So they will have an oblique angle looking across, uh but not down in somebody's backyard.
Okay.
I have a question for the um management, once the apartments are built. Is there gonna be onsite management?
So maybe you can come up here and.
Because if some someone made a comment about the quality of life after these are built, if it's a good management company that is gonna be responsible.
Right, there there were a few comments that were made in the public comment period that were a little erroneous. This is, both communities, the townhome and the apartment communities, are fully gated, fully staffed with onsite management and security and maintenance. So there'll be security on there twenty-four hours, as well as the retail.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, and uh Rob, one other thing that that's come up. I know that um there were questions about crime internally and externally and stuff like that. Um, and one of the questions has come up, and most of it is comes in with some of our older buildings. Uh when I've done my ride-alongs, they always take me up to the east side for some reason. They don't want me, they don't want me in my neighborhood, I guess. And um one of the, one of the um constant issues that we run into is the inability for the sheriff's department to get into these complexes. Some of them, the PAC teams have actually had them remove their gates. Um, so I don't wanna see that happen here. Um, can we ensure and can the applicant make sure that we have like the Knox boxes that the fire department gets? Can we make sure we get the ones with the blue labels for the police? Because that's something I wanna see start getting around the community, is that especially considering some of the horrendous things that have happened over the last couple of weeks, we need to make sure that the cops can get in someplace in a timely manner and not be sitting there hitting buzzers to try to get in a gate or trying to make a callback to have somebody come open, open something. So I wanna make sure that we we have the ability to to get that police access as well as the fire access, so.
If the city's uh crime prevention officer, Carrie German, reviews all of the plans, and she recommended conditions of approval on the project to require exactly that entry device, and it was included in the project approved by the.
Excellent, okay. Any other questions uh of the council at this time? All right, so we've got um.
So it's the recommendation is to adopt resolution number CC twenty nineteen dash sixty-eight.
Yes, that's the the first one.
First one.
Is the is a zone change here, and that's uh resolution number CC two thousand nineteen six zero six eight. That's item um, that'd be eight-two-A, Rob, is that correct?
Well, first, let me just, I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know it's a really late night and we all really care about our community and and uh this is, this is I appreciate everyone coming out and sharing their passion within the community. I think it's really important we have this type of engagement and uh, you know, I share the concerns. I've taken a a long listen to hear what everyone has to say and, and I I I do feel the concerns. I I weigh both sides, we do need the housing, and we do need the uh we do need the upper, the higher-class grocery store and market. But there's also a part of me that thinks, you know, this is a great project, but maybe it's not the best area. Maybe it is a little dense, so I'm on the fence. But I just wanted to tell everyone, I appreciate you guys coming out and uh and letting us hear. You know, it's all about the community and what you guys want. Um, but yeah, I I do have concerns. The traffic, the crime, the noise, keeping the quality of life for our existing residents that are here now is really, really important to me, and not impacting them negatively in any way. Um, so I just wanted to, I wanted to say that.
I I want to say that um I share the concerns for the existing uh residents. I think we tried to do, and I think our staff tries to do, their utmost to uh make sure that projects that are coming into the city are kept to the highest possible standards, that are safe for the community, that any impacts on traffic and and other similar concerns such as crime and those kinds of things are met with mitigating aspects, and that is to say um policies that address those particular issues. Over the years, and I was very happy to see Mr. Norris here. We were on the council together for a number of years at the beginning of the. We were on the council together for a number of years at the beginning of the 2000s. And we heard similar discussions, pro and con, regarding the hospital, for instance. Uh, regarding projects around the city. And again, I thought that the city was was doing a superb job in uh addressing the concerns of the of the of the residents. Many of those projects have been approved, have been in existence for many, many years. And the concerns of the residents have been resolved favorably. I think that's, this project has all the hallmarks of that. That we are going to in fact bring housing that is in great need. Rental that is in great need. And that is going to uh provide a release to the uh needs of the community in terms of uh providing housing for these people that are working here and traveling out of the area or staying in hotels. So we need to change this opinion that is widely uh, that is widely held. That Palmdale is not a place for young people to live. We need to change that perception. We need to make a positive impact on this community. We want to make people, young, middle-aged, and gray-haired people like us, to say, I am proud to live in Palmdale. And my sense after reading the reports, hearing the testimony tonight, is that this project will be a step in that direction. Doesn't solve everything. It's not gonna solve our housing needs, but it's a step in that direction. So I'm gonna move to approve this project. I move to approve fifth uh ordinance number CC 2019-68, ordinance number 1528.
I second that, but before we um cast our vote. I want to address the group that says support responsible growth. To me, providing a different housing type is the responsible thing for me to do. Um, I was not fortunate enough to be able to buy my house when I first decided to grow my family. I got married, I did live in an apartment complex. There's absolutely nothing wrong with starting a young family at an apartment complex, because I did that. Uh, there were a couple of comments that I still believe are stereotyping the east side. Someone said apartments belong on the east side or that they are on the east side. Um, someone said that um our kids are not gonna come back to Palmdale. I'm experiencing that myself with my own kids. I want my kids to be near me because they're my kids. But they are free to make their decision as to where they want to make their lives. I would like them to come and visit me. I'd like them to uh be able to say proudly that they grew up in the city of Palmdale. Um, someone also said that we're not Orange County. I don't know how to take that. What is wrong with having higher aspirations? We're not Orange County, we're Palmdale. That does not mean that we cannot have and offer the quality of life that other communities have. Again, to me, my responsibility as an elected official is to provide different amenities. Single-family housing, for those that can afford it, straight coming straight out of college, that's great. But young families like myself started our lives in an apartment complex. Good quality onsite management is what I would be looking for and expect with this development. I don't believe that the developers are here to just make a quick buck and and leave. Uh, they're going to be providing the quality that the millennials are looking for. My granddaughter, she's told me that she's not interested in a single home fam, uh, single uh family home. She wants to be able to do the things that young people do. My generation and your generation didn't do that. Things change. We have to adapt to change. That's the only way that we're gonna be providing better quality of life. Change is difficult for some people to accept, I know, I'm, I acknowledge that. But inevitably, we are growing, and we have to be able to keep our kids here if they want to be here. They're free to go wherever they want to go. It hurts me as a father to acknowledge that, because that's the direction my kids are going. It's inevitable. But again, this responsible growth in Palmdale, to me, it is irresponsible to only provide one type of housing. That is the responsible thing to do. Uh, with that, Mayor, or whatever.
Let me, let me just, let me just wrap this up real quick. Um, I've had, over the last couple of weeks on this project, since it went to planning commission, I watched the entire meeting. And I've talked to a lot of neighbors, I've talked to a lot of friends. I've got some friends that may not be happy with me after tonight, but I sat far away as the city attorney is from Governor Newsom. He made it abundantly clear that he's coming after every one of our cities if we fail to meet the requirements for diversification of housing. Every time we ask somebody, what's good, what's bad, what do you like, what you don't like? And we've had the um, we've had the uh, the the planning meetings, and people look at the pictures and they look at the housing, they point to things that are in Valencia, they point to things that are in Pacific Grove. And we turn around and we look at that, and the density factors are four times what we're seeing in this project. The thing that that has scared the living daylights out of me has been some of the proposals coming down from the state that look at intersections just like this. And in the not-too-distant future, we'll start mandating high-density housing, again, to the four times this level and at five stories, because they consider that a transit hub, because two bus lines meet there, okay? We fought back SB 50, and the governor sat there and looked at us and said, I'm disappointed that we couldn't carry through with SB 50 at this time. But I am convinced that the core values contained in there are in the other housing bills. There were over 400 bills that had the word housing in it this year. And we currently are working uh with the league uh on um, it's like 30 more that are outstanding. That we're still trying to get to stake the massage uh to make it a little more palatable. So when I, when I look at what what could happen, and when I look at what was proposed on this parcel over the years, when the original proposal up there was for a low-income senior housing, and we all know there's no such thing as low-income seniors. All you have to do is have one person 55 in there, it doesn't matter how old, because my mom lives in one of those buildings. And it's full of kids, and it's all subsidized housing, and it's, it's not what was portrayed. So when the question comes up about Section 8, the state made, we just had a, we just had a hearing here and the state housing and community development wagged their fingers at everybody and said, it is illegal for you to deny someone housing because they have a Section 8 voucher. So if they can somehow make it work, you can't deny it, so. But when you take a look at what's being proposed on this type of a project, this isn't conducive to those Section 8 types of rents for that to work there. That doesn't work. When, when they were originally looking at the low-income component for that parcel over there, the density was much higher to make that subsidized housing component and a lower rent pencil out. The developer, when they first were were um making their initial proposals to the city, we had a gas station, a liquor store, uh, and a convenience market on the corner. They realized that there was no way, in God's green earth, that anybody was gonna let that happen. And they worked around that project. I've got two or three restaurants that we all go to right now. They're looking and wanting and probably calling you guys, because they've asked me for your numbers. They want to be able to open a cafe or something over there. So I'm encouraged by the fact that we have uh people with quality businesses that are looking to move or expand in there because they see the potential in there. I think that the uh, the traffic and the parking have been more than adequately addressed uh with what the, this, when you, especially when you consider the C3 zoning would would look at at least twice the the um, the traffic for that. And we just did a ribbon cutting over at Residence Inn, we were just over there at Residence Inn. We have families, small families, and husband and wives that have been living in there for three and four months right now, because they can't find a place. And if you go to any of the better restaurants around town and sit down and talk with the, the aerospace staff and some of the people from the hospital, they'll tell you, it's a minimum of a six-month wait for, I'm gonna clean this up for you, for a crummy apartment, and are all crummy. So these guys are looking to help address that issue, and that, that helps my comfort level. Uh, I've, I've always had a concern about where do we put the, the apartments, how do we do? But look, with this place being right across from the mall, one of the things the state's requiring in our secret documents is addressing G8 greenhouse gas and vehicles miles traveled. This is gonna help that because they're right there. So this, this is hitting a lot of the positive aspects. I think that anything that we do there is gonna have an impact on homes immediately to the west. Anything that we do there is gonna have an impact there. Whether it's significant, and whether it's substantial, and whether it rises to the level of a denial, that is really the question that we have. So I really appreciate everybody coming in and um, and the conversations I've been able to have over the last few weeks uh with everybody on this topic. But a- at this point, I think that they've adequately addressed these issues. I think that um, a, a couple of the um loose ends that we were talking about with uh traffic are things that are gonna have to be evaluated as the additional traffic improvements occur to the west and take that bottleneck out of there. So with that, we'll go ahead.
Just a, just a second. I, I just wanted to comment that uh, we received a letter from uh Finney Arnold. I don't know, it was, I think it was minutes before the meeting started, well, about a half an hour or so. And I, I did read that and took it into consideration and and thinking about this issue. Uh, I do note that the uh list of persons, I guess, our signatures that signed a petition against this particular project. The great majority uh are from outside of Palmdale, and I'm not minimizing the importance of uh our neighbors to comment and to, and to put uh, to bring input into uh, into projects in the, in our city. But out of 95 signatures, uh, there were a total of 34 that were from the city of Palmdale. And uh many as far away as Delaware, from outside the city. Uh, from Fremont, from San Diego, from Concord, different places. Uh, Walnut Creek, nice area, by the way. Santa Clara, Rome, well, that's Rome, United States.
Yeah.
But nevertheless.
Rome, Indiana, isn't it?
I don't know where. My point is that um, again, I also appreciate the comments, especially the people who came out here tonight and stayed at this very late hour, to give us uh their input. And uh, I know that it's well-intentioned, it's, it's heartfelt, it's passionate, and we need to hear it. But I think that the concerns of the community are adequately addressed by this project, and I think it'll make for a better Palmdale. So I move for the question.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion to second. Can the city clerk bring up the uh screen, please?
So there's a motion. It's moved by Richard Loa and seconded by Juan Correa. So if you'd like to start voting. The motion passes with three yes and one um no.
Okay, so that's on the zone change on the um, that was on the, that was on CC 2019-68. Uh, and on.
Ordinance 1528.
1528?
On 1529, uh, all of the testimony that was heard also applied to this particular um article.
Is there, on the um. Is there, is there any other? Okay, I'm looking at, that, that was 2019, that's zero, 068. And that was ordinance number 1528. Uh, 82B, do we need to take a separate vote on that item, sir? Or are both those incorporated into 8.2?
Both of those, yeah, those are both.
So is the zone change and the general plan amendment included in that?
But 8.3.
Is a separate item.
Separate item, does that require any uh further testimony? Or when we close the uh public hearing, did that address both of these?
No, 8.3 is a different document.
Totally different, okay.
All right, so on 8.3, so that, 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 that carried three, one, with one abstent, uh, one absent. Uh, 8.3, who's got that one? Is that uh? Mr. Royler? Do you have it? Matt? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. On July 11, 2019, the planning commission adopted resolution PC 2019-029, recommending that the city council approves Zone Ordinance Amendment 19004, which is to allow religious assembly uses within the C5 service commercial zone. In March of this year, a zone clearance application was submitted to the planning division requesting occupancy review approval to establish a religious assembly use to be located at 190C Recor, Suite C12. The subject site is Zone C5, and a religious assembly use is not a permitted use. As such, an application was filed to amend the municipal code. The zoning ordinance amendment will allow for new religious assembly uses within the C5 zone. The proposed use meets the general plan goals and zoning purpose and intent. The purpose for the C5 zone is for commercial and service uses, and is intended to not have a detrimental effect on adjacent properties. As shown here, all religious assembly uses must adhere to specific development standards such as minimum lot size and minimum parking requirements. The amendment would still maintain the intent of the C5 zone by limiting the size of the religious assembly use based on the number of available parking spaces per assembly area if located within an existing building. It should be noted that the property owners of commercial or industrial centers must understand the impacts of tenant mix due to the higher parking demand of a church, restaurant, or gym, and the separation requirements on sensitive use, land uses, such as a church or school. The permitting of a religious assembly use within a commercial or industrial center may impact whom the property owners rent to, such as a banquet hall, bar, or lounge, which sells alcohol and requires a distant separation from sensitive uses. Here is the proposed amendment with the changes to the municipal code within the public, quasi-public, and institutional uses section highlighted in red. The options for the city council are to adopt the ordinance approving Zone Ordinance Amendment 19004, or continue the item, or deny. The planning commission recommends option one. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, city clerk, do we, uh, city clerk, do we have any speaker slips on this item?
We do not.
Did anybody want to address it that forgot to fill it out? Okay, so I have a motion to close public hearing, please. I have a motion, and it sounds like a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye opposed, so ordered. All right, let me ask you a question, Matt. So basically, it's up to the property owner to decide if he's gonna put a church in there, to understand that he's going to limit other potential future uses of that property. So if he wants to turn around later on and bring in a brewery or something like that, he's not gonna be able to do that in an industrial zone.
Correct. Now, we'll be required to have a parking study to verify there's sufficient parking.
And with the alcohol, there's a separation requirement.
Correct.
We have the ability to waive that? I thought there was a mechanism by which, that's only for bona fide restaurants, correct? So serve food, right? That's the key? All right. How do we handle that, then, when a, when one of these centers comes in and says, I want to add a church in here? Do we advise them that, that there is a, that, do we make sure they understand that they're limiting their future potential tenant base?
Correct. This is.
Sometimes they get desperate to, I gotta get rent in here, I gotta get rent in here.
Exactly. Um, you know, a church use is going to take up a lot of parking and a lot of space in a commercial center and limit their income stream. We routinely deal with this. All of the other commercial zones allow churches, and they all have the same separation requirements. So as, you know, property owners.
And have expressed the same concern on each one of those that come up.
Yep, and, you know, so we routinely uh advise the property owners and the managers that we're more than happy to approve uh the um, the church use. But be aware that it may limit who you can rent to in the future, and it's their business decision how to operate.
Thank you, sir.
At this location, I think that they recently expanded their parking lot. So that would, I don't think that would be an issue here, because they just expanded.
I think it's more the issue that they want to bring in something like a pub or brewery or something like that.
Right. Right.
Unless it was a bona fide restaurant, that they wouldn't be able to do that, so. Anybody else? Mr. Bishop, you got anything, or? Mr. Loa?
No, uh, did the staff read the title of the ordinance? Was that done?
Um, introduce the ordinance, uh, was missed.
Should be a motion to introduce the, uh, ordinance?
It's a voice vote.
Number fifteen twenty-nine.
Do you have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor of introduction to the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, hearing no objections, so ordered. Um, any other questions or comments to the staff on this particular item? Hearing them, we need a motion, uh, one way or the other on.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Uh, anything further? Okay, so I had.
So we have a motion and.
By Mr. Corio.
Yes, but, and Austin Bishop.
Mr. Bishop.
To adopt ordinance number one-five-two-nine.
Correct. And did we read the ordinance into the record, Matt?
Yes.
City clerk, okay. All right, so if we're all set.
We'll start voting. The motion passes with four votes.
Very good. Item number eight-point-four, uh, public review of proposed ordinance fifteen thirty for adoption. I'm assuming Matt.
Correct. Ordinance number fifteen thirty, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale, California, amending the Palmdale municipal code seventeen point eighty-six point oh-four-oh, point C three, four and five, zone ordinance amendment nineteen oh-oh-five.
Move to introduce the ordinance?
I have a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing, no objections, so ordered. Okay?
Public hearing.
Yeah, he's gonna give the staff report.
So on July eleventh, uh, two thousand nineteen, the planning commission adopted resolution number PC twenty nineteen oh-three-oh, recommending the city council approve zone ordinance amendment nineteen zero-zero-five to allow for an exception to the fence height requirement within the commercial, industrial and public facilities and open space and recreation zones as required for safety if determined by the planning director. Pursuant to the Palmdale municipal code, the maximum height for a solid wall, fence or hedge is limited to forty-two inches high. Recent developments have encountered design issues with regards to fence heights within the building setbacks when detention basins are involved. The zoning ordinance amendment will allow for more flexibility to provide fencing within the building setback within the commercial, industrial and public facilities and open space and recreation zones as required for safety if determined by the planning director. In addition, the proposed increased height will prevent potential accidents to onsite users and pedestrians when fencing, such as those located adjacent to detention basins are proposed. The intent of the amendment is not to allow increased fencing in all cases. A majority of projects can be designed to provide adequate fence heights adjacent to detention basins and other below-grade structures. Here is the proposed amendment with the changes to commercial zones highlighted in Here is the proposed amendment with the changes to industrial zones, also highlighted in red. And here is the proposed amendment with the changes to the public facilities and open space and recreation zones highlighted in red. The options for the city council are to adopt the ordinance approving zone ordinance amendment nineteen oh-oh-five, continue the item, or deny. The planning commission recommends option one. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any, uh, public speakers on this item?
We did not.
Did anyone fail to fill out a slip and, uh, wanted to address this? Do you need a motion to close public hearing now?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So ordered. Okay, so, uh, we need a, uh, voice vote to introduce ordinance number fifteen thirty. Have a motion?
So vote.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we, um, introduced ordinance number fifteen thirty, and you read the requisite language?
Correct.
All right, okay. All right, council, any particular discussion on this item?
I'd like to move to approve it.
I have a motion and a second. I think we jumped the gun on the city clerk here.
We have a motion in prog- progress to adopt ordinance number fifteen thirty. Richard Loa is the mover. And seconded, you seconded. Bishop, start voting.
I got it.
The motion passes with four votes.
All right, I'm gonna ask for the council's indulgence a little bit on this. On this particular item, there's really a couple of different topics here. Uh, I think it's important for the staff to get the, um, uh, get some direction on the, uh, implementation date, and Ben is gonna give us that discussion here. Uh, I don't know that we make the best acronym decisions at, uh, ten-thirty or eleven o'clock at night. Uh, so can we have, can, can we split this and we'll look at those and then come back at, uh, at our next, um, continued meeting, I think we've got coming up, uh, with some preferred, uh, naming concepts for you? Would that help?
For, just for the naming portion, not the.
Yeah.
Resource adequacy portion?
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I, I think we gotta take a look at that cuz you guys need to have the time to be able to plan out and make some decisions on that resource adequacy thing, so. That's correct.
All right, so go ahead and give us that, that portion of the report here.
Sure, so what's going on is that, uh, California Public Utilities Commission, uh, they've been revising, uh, their policy on resource adequacy, and so it's going to affect the timeline for the residential rollout of our community trace aggregation program. So what we're looking at is, um, initially, we proposed, uh, implementing the program in September of two thousand twenty for residential, and now we're suggesting October of two thousand twenty because of the resource adequacy rules. And, um, since September is considered a summer month, it's gonna be very difficult to obtain that energy, and, um, it's gonna be very costly too if we are able to obtain it. So that way, we can keep the costs low for this program, and, um, it won't impact residents as badly, and also we'll be able to start off on a good foot there and, uh, start, uh, building up revenue for that program so that we can plan for future years and, uh, plan, uh, for, uh, future changes, uh, with, uh, public utilities commission, uh, decisions.
So, as I understand it, so, uh, September is still considered a, a, a summer billing month for resource adequacy and, and charge rates, correct?
That's correct, so.
And if we implement in, in that month, everybody gets a huge bill right off the bat?
Well, yes, because, um, what resource adequacy is, is it's, um, to ensure that in a really bad energy usage day where perhaps it's really hot and people are using a lot of energy, that we're ensuring that there's sufficient energy to meet that need. We have to procure additional energy where we're pretty much having a power plant agree to not provide that energy to anyone else, so that if we need it, they'll provide it to us. And since it, it, there's gonna be a high demand, since it's a summer month and it's a pretty high amount of energy that we're gonna need, there's a law of supply and demand again. So there's gonna be a high demand, there's not a whole lot of it available, so it'll, it'll be very difficult to find, and when we do find it, it'll be at a premium cost. So by starting the program in October instead of September, we're not gonna have as high of a resource adequacy requirement, so we'll be able to keep the costs down and be able to prepare for this, the upcoming summer for two thousand twenty-one.
Thanks. All right, do we have any questions from the council, or, uh, can we call for any public, uh, has anybody from the public wanted to comment on this item? Do you have any cards on this?
None.
Anybody forget to fill out a card? Okay, council? Is any, do you, uh, is there any objection to the staff pushing this one month so that the initial, uh, rollout rates are, are, uh, more favorable?
Are we moving the entire item then? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I, I asked if there was any objection to splitting the, 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 the naming issue up so we have a little more time to take a look at that.
Objection to that.
I don't have objection to that.
All right, so, and to which, to which piece? Are we, are we okay with moving the, moving the, uh, resource adequacy, because of resource adequacy issues, moving the roll-out date for residential customers from September to October? Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Are we good on that? Do you need a specific, do you need this direction? Do we need a motion? What's necessary here?
Make a motion to do what you just said as to the implementation date. Are you gonna talk about the name tonight?
No, I think we, I think we, I don't know how much we've really been able to look at that, so I think that, um, I'd like to address this piece of it first. So did, did someone have a motion that we push this?
I'm moved to postpone the municipal residential launch date on this subject to October two thousand twenty.
I have a motion by Mr. Loa.
Do you want to take each one of these separately?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, I'm recording this motion. It's to approve the October two thousand twenty implementation date for residential municipal services, and then, um.
That's gonna be the utilized California choice.
That's gonna be the next.
The next, yeah.
Okay. So go ahead and start voting for the first, approve the October two thousand twenty implementation That passes with four yes votes.
All right, I'd like to ask that we, uh, move this, uh, the, the, the naming discussion, move it to our, uh, next time we meet, and can, Ben, can you provide us with a separate memo to each of the council members with that, so we have, just have that piece on our hand and we can look at that individually and have some additional discussions with the staff on this issue?
Yes, I just need some more direction too in regards to resource adequacy, and I failed to mention that we have representatives from Cal Choice here if you have any questions for them.
I think it seems pretty cut dry.
Oh, yeah, so I just wanna make sure that everyone's on, on board with that of, um, using Cal Choice to do the resource adequacy work for us. Otherwise, we would, um, we can go another route, but we won't even have an idea of the cost of going that route until after the fact of, um, getting the resource adequacy. So we would get a bill three or four months afterwards saying this is how much it was for that.
The, 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 uh, the concept is that we have somebody on board here to assist us with those things, Mr. Pirtin?
Yes, I believe Ben is just looking for, we moved the implementation date, I think he's looking for separate direction on, uh, using the Cal Choice for the resource adequacy calculations for us.
Well, for procuring the resource adequacy for us. Uh, we, we have another option, but we, we won't know the cost or anything until after the fact, and I imagine nobody wants to, to have someone procure that, so we have and, and get.
We don't know.
Yeah. All right, we just wanted to formalize the decision.
Anybody object to? Any of the experts to figure that out for us? Do you need anything specific on that, Matt?
Uh, I think you've got your direction, so.
Right, okay, so I, the record will show you the anonymous direction on that item. Okay, and then bring, bring, send us a memo on all those different names, the, the, the ones that you recommend, and then maybe there were a couple of the other ones that didn't quite make the cut?
Well, we got, we had a total of thirty names. I can give you a memo with all of the names and.
But the, yeah, but.
If you.
Here's the ones that.
The top four, and then the twenty-sixth edition.
I don't wanna get into an all-night discussion on, you know, name number twenty-nine, you know? But I, I just think, just get us, get that out to us, we can kick it around, we'll discuss it with the city manager and with you, and then, uh, either at the workshop, we can put it on there, and continue this to the, either the workshop or to the, um, for the next meeting, and that'll give you plenty of time to get later, later, whatever you need, all right? All right, thank you. Okay, item number ten. Reports from the council members. Wants to take AQMD. Mr. Bishop, did you want to take that?
Uh, sure. Tended AVA QMD, um, more good stuff, rebates for cars. I think we, uh, were applying for more credit for the electric car rebate, electric lawn mowers, rebates for, uh, companies that have, um, older vehicles, uh, trying to get those older, older vehicles off the fleet and get them into more fuel efficient. Um, we ordered a couple of projects, and I think we, uh, made a couple of rate adjustments at the AVA QMD meeting.
Okay, so just kinda going through the agenda here, and just to add to that, uh, we, um, we kept the permit fees, uh, increases, uh, we're still the, the lowest at nine-point-five percent.
Yep.
Uh, we added additional fees, uh, we captured, uh, cannabis facilities because they, uh, are gonna require quite a bit of AQMD, um, review for adjacent orders and Awarded seventy grand in mobile source emission reductions, uh, on a, for waste management for some of their equipment. Uh, another one for learn-for-life for vehicle, like, like you were saying.
Yeah.
If you've got, if you've got a vehicle, if you've got old stuff, we can replace it through AQMD, you know, the city's looking at getting some of their old vans replaced, and so that's, that's important stuff that had happened.
There's a lot of activity on that board. We reach out to a lot of businesses and organizations out here, and I feel like.
I'm really happy that having regular presence from the Palmdale contingent at these meetings has resulted in quite a few Palmdale businesses.
It has, I feel like we're covering some territory by, by showing our presence and being there at every single meeting.
Absolutely. And, uh, something else that, uh, you mentioned about the, the, the vehicle, uh, rebates and things like this, um, so we, we were trying to figure out how we're gonna handle this thing. We, we authorize additional funding for alternative vehicle programs, um, and we're trying to figure out if this was just a blip on the radar because of the fact that, uh, there was so, so many, um, rebates going on with the Teslas.
A lot of rebates.
Sixty percent of the auto rebates were going to Teslas that were bought out of the area.
Well, yeah, there's no Tesla dealership, but they're still getting a partial credit.
Yeah.
For that purchase.
So, for what that, you know, just keep that in mind, so, all right. Transit Authority, you were in court, right?
No, I was, uh, in San Diego at the P-three conference.
That's right, you at the P-three conference, so, uh, I'll be finding the right one here. So on the AVTA, um, just going over the agenda here, probably the most, um, you know, there were legislative reports and things of that nature, a lease agreement that was, uh, we got a four-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction, um, amount, not to exceed four-hundred-thousand-dollar two-year, two-year period, uh, for some additional buses, uh, and, um, and then, uh, now I guess you can be the chairman forever. They changed that. Uh, and then, um, a lot of other routine business, a lot of, um, performance indicators and things of that nature. Contract cities, uh, we didn't have a contract cities meeting, I did have liability trust fund. Anybody who's interested in lawsuits, I can tell you everything there is about lawsuits, but then I can't tell you anything specific about them cuz it's closed session. Audit committee, I don't think there was an audit committee meeting?
I don't think so.
Um, investment oversight, was there an investment oversight meeting? No. League of Cities. I have a lot of stuff from League of Cities, I'm not gonna bore you to death over it. I'll give you the Reader's Digest version, a lot of legislative issues. We've had two or three legislative forums, legislative committee meetings and webinars, as well as a very large book of legislative documents here. This, the state is ramming quite a bit of stuff. We've gotta make a majority and off the list and anybody, so they're gonna do what they're gonna do. So we're just trying to help soften the blow, and a lot of these issues, we're going to the state with the, um, uh, more of an attitude of how do we get the yes as opposed to we're totally opposing these issues? They're totally opposing these issues, they just blow us off then, we've just got, we don't have a seat at the table any longer. Also, I, uh, we had the, um, we had the, the meeting and the, got a new board of directors, I was on the nominating committee, and then the president just appointed me to the general resolution committee for the upcoming meeting, so I'll be, got some more homework with all the resolutions that are coming up.
Like you have nothing else to do.
Yeah, I got nothing else to do. Uh, sanitation.
Probably we met.
Okay, well, I, I was down in, there was, um, um, the ma- at the main district meeting for, uh, for the, uh, sanitation that the chair goes to, and we're working on, looks like we've got a resolution on the labor issues, and, and as a result of that, there are other questions that came up, so we've got more personnel committee meetings coming. So anybody wants to be a chairman, go to all those meetings, and we're here, just let me know.
Does it look like there's resolution on the way?
Well, yeah, we got, we, we, well, um, every time you solve something, it opens up another can of worms. So, so as a result of, of, of that set of agreements, it's opened up a bunch of other questions, so. Now, so, you know, we got, we got the list of, of unintended consequences.
Yeah.
That now have to be resolved, so we got a couple of meetings coming up on that. And we're moving through it, but, uh, you know, he also.
Things and it's nice to know those guys are, are getting to, reaching some middle ground.
Yeah, um, and that we're also avoiding any work stoppage because work stoppage at the sanitation plant wouldn't be good.
No, that, uh, that needs a continual.
Recycle water, who's got that one?
We had no meeting.
Yeah, it was dark. Yeah.
Okay. Southern California Association of Governments. All right, so let me go. This is the Rena manual. If you wanna see all there is to know about, uh, low income housing, I've got the latest report right here. The, uh, they, at the, at the, um, let me find the right, right one here, 'cause I've got all my agendas here. So we moved the, um, Rena methodology and I appreciate, I know you're following that, um, on the, um, on the webcast as those are going, and, uh, I appreciate the fact that you don't burn my phone up during the meeting. And so the mean Rena methodology options are out there for public review. But again, this document is, fits into about an inch and a half binder. I'd encourage everybody to read that because it's gonna have significant impacts on all of our communities. And they're also anticipating, Mark, was it a forty percent increase in arena numbers?
They talked about approximately forty percent, yes.
Yeah, so the numbers bouncing around, but needless to say, they ain't going down. Um, the Canetso Cal, which is the regional transportation study has been released, um, and is more public. We had, um, joint policy committee meetings, separate policy committee meetings, regional council meetings on this, on these topics. And, um, the, um, is, is, there's a, there's a lot of wringing of hands and gnashing of teeth over these issues. But, um, state, the governor, HCDs all told us, you know, y'all gotta get in line here and you need to be providing a diversity of housing, which this project tonight, I think went a long way towards, towards that, towards that goal. It doesn't, doesn't, it didn't necessarily help low income housing, but what it did is it's gonna help stabilize the other apartments because the other complaint that I'm getting on a weekly basis is how much the rents are going up. A lady called me the other day and she lives in, I'm gonna clean up her language, a crummy apartment. And her rent went up for her little apartment, eight hundred dollars a month. She says, what am I gonna do? And I said, well, short of moving someplace else, she says, there is no place else to move. There you have it. So this is gonna, this is gonna help set the bar and I think it's gonna wake up some of the other buildings here. The, uh, I'll be happy to send you guys the highlights of the meeting. Uh, we had the, um, we rolled out the red carpet for Mayor Garcetti, as they always do. And one other SCAG meeting, which I know you're all waiting anxiously to hear about, is we had, I attended the airport tack meeting. Uh, I gotta hand it to, Mike is really on top of that issue with the airport guys. He, they've really helped massage our numbers, uh, and our, our projections, uh, to make it very clear that our airports can be viable. Without those numbers coming, uh, out publicly, showing that there's the demand and the need here over the next five, ten and twenty years, we're not relevant to anybody else out there in the industry or in, or in any of the federal and state levels. So we're looking at one point nine million passenger numbers, I believe, on an annual basis, some, some. I mean.
One point five, you said.
Yeah, I, no, I think it went up, but the last thing I got was one point eight nine from Hiroshi. So I think it's like roughly about one point nine now. So the, the number kinda moves a little bit, but you know what? It's, it's better than zero, which is what Lawa wanted us to have a couple of years ago, last time we went through this exercise. So, uh, it really makes us a relevant player and like I, I mentioned earlier, I kinda felt like the, um, the only girl at the dance, um, after that airport tack meeting because all the other groups were coming to us going, what are you doing, what are you doing? Uh, what's happening? The, the guys that have sued Lawa wanna know what's happening, uh, Burbank, Long Beach, uh, Orange County, well, we got pounds of noise. Hey, we got B ones, send it our way, you know? So, I mean, they're not even know that seven thirty seven is taking off, so. So a lot of SCAG meetings this month. And, uh, could use a little help. Sister Cities, um, I know you guys have had some discussions with them, visitation's coming up and they have an event coming up in October. Anything else, or Becky, do you have anything else on that? Were you at the last meeting? I stuck my nose in, but had to leave 'cause I had another meeting. Were you there? Okay. And Laura's not here. I don't know if they had a, uh, prison committee meeting, so. All right, uh, Mr. Bishop, if you wanna go ahead and start with, uh, uh, any other meetings that didn't make the, uh, didn't make the cut on the list there, sir?
Sure, I'll go over a handful of them. Um, Corson, Walk on Words, you were there, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you for being there and helping with that.
Of course. Um, we're making really good progress in that park. Um, as far as I understand, the pool should be open later this year or next year. This fall, so that's, that's getting closer very soon. So we're making big improvements on our Corson Park and, uh, we had an event there where we did a poetry unveiling. So it's all part of the revitalization of our downtown area. I went to a re-brand opening ribbon cutting, uh, the residence inn, Mayor was there as well. Um, they did a remodel there and, and that place does exceptionally well. They're constantly booked, their people are happy and, um, that hotel's been here for many, many, many years and they do very well and we're happy with them. Um, I went to the family movie nights. We had Up and we had Zoo.
Heard somebody was trying to steal the backpack that you were try, that you were trying to give away there that night.
What?
Really, I kept running through?
Oh, no, what, the waste management backpack?
Yeah.
Oh, that one? Oh, the golden green? Nah, I think somebody won that, but, uh, yeah, I attended the, I've been attending the family movie nights and, and it's been really good to go to those to see all the families and the kids. Well, actually, I was there with Juan at the last one for Zootopia. I think that was his first time seeing that movie. Uh, the concerts, I met with, uh, Senator Scott Wilk and, and brought up some issues that we've had here, um, as far as our, uh, DMV, uh, animal shelter, just miscellaneous things that, that I wanted to bring to his attention, so I had a meeting with Wilk. I was at the high-speed community, uh, high-speed rail and rail planning community workshop last night, which was incredibly attended. It was a packed house and it was great to have so many more people come out from the first two workshops we had 'cause it's, we're finally getting some engagement from the residents, which is important because a lot of those people were kind of unsure about what project is which, when it's gonna come, if it's gonna come and, you know, there's a lot of unanswered, unanswered questions out there. Yeah, exactly, but I think, I think we did really well at the community last night, showing them exactly what's going on, what the plans are.
And why?
And, and why, and it kinda, I think it put a lot of people at ease and answered a lot of questions that have been out there. So I hope we continue to do those workshops and, and just keep reaching out to the community. Um, there's more, but I'll let the, you guys dig into the rest of the, rest of the stuff.
I made it just in time for cleanup, um, but.
Oh, did you? That's the most important part.
We're gonna issue those to all the council members. Can you put that on the agenda, the dustpan?
Dust pans and rooms for council, yeah.
Mr. Loa?
Uh, see, I met with Senator Wilk, um, uh, regarding, uh, energy efficiency, uh, consults that potentially could save money or bring in money to the city. That has to be followed up with, uh, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, wanted to have a session with, uh, our city manager, Mr. Pertie. So on July seventeenth, we both attended that meeting. I think it was, uh, uh, it was a good dialogue between, uh, the city manager and, uh, the Hispanic chamber. Uh, I think there's some, um, some prospects for having, uh, uh, outreach to the community and, uh, and making things a little easier for, uh, for new businesses that want to come into the city that might be facing challenges and, and, and they're startups that, uh, the city of Palmdale will be assisting with. Uh, I went to the Civ Mill BBQ, the civilian military barbecue, uh, Edwards Air Force Base, uh, I think JJ, you were out there, um, and, uh, that's always well-attended and, uh, you know, strengthens, oh, the mayor was there, as well as his lovely wife, my wife was there as well. But, uh, this strengthens our relationship between, um, our community, the Anlo Valley and, uh, uh, the efforts that are made out there at Air Force Base.
There's huge morale issue for the guys.
It is, it is. Uh, the AV, the Anlo Valley Fair, we had presentation by them tonight. Uh, they had a kickoff dinner on July nineteenth. I attended that. I believe you were there as well, Mayor?
Sir, Mr. Bishop was there.
Mr. Bishop was well there.
Didn't you show up at some point? You missed that one?
No. On July twentieth, um, through the twenty-second, um, I attended the, um, P three airport summit in San Diego. Uh, city manager Pertie, uh, assistant city manager Murphy, Mr. Euler and, uh, and Mike Behan were all there. I think that was extremely productive. Um, I got to see firsthand our consultant who brought us into contact and had, uh, private meetings with, um, consultants that are going to be very helpful in bringing that project to life. Looking at that, uh, with great anticipation. We were there for three days. It was a very productive meeting. I could not attend the AVTA board meeting because I was in San Diego attending the conference for airports.
Ms. McLaren represented us, if I remember.
Okay. Appreciate that. I did attend one of the concerts. There was a presentation by Assemblyman Tom Lackey of the, uh, Tupis Tactical Security Company, um, who was, uh, honoring one of their, um, security officers who engaged in a heroic act in saving, uh, someone's life. That gentleman was there. Thanks, thank God to.
It was fairly emotional, too.
It was emotional.
Very emotional presentation.
I went to the, um, concert series with Martina McBride. It was very well received. I think a lot of us, a lot of us were there. Uh, on Saturday, I did attend the funeral services with the memorial services for Darren Parker.
Thank you for representing us. I had another funeral.
Yeah.
And personal commitment that day, and I understand you represented us well and I appreciate you for that.
The councilman Correa was there as well.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
I wanna thank both you guys for attending it too, 'cause I was unable to make it.
Yeah, but, you know, uh, Mr. Parker was a, was a gentleman. In fact, I was, I was shocked when I heard that he was ill and, um, and then when he passed away, uh, I was, I was, I didn't always agree with Mr. Parker, but he was respectful. Um, and he was a, he was a strong voice for, for the community, uh, for improving race relations in our city as well as in the Anlo Valley, and he will be, he will be missed.
You're right. There's something to be said about somebody who stands up for what they believe in, unwavering and it's that kind of person especially. They don't, people like that don't come around that often, so he will be missed.
Yeah, I did attend last night the High Speed Rail, um, open house that was held last night. Uh, it was very, very well-attended. Um, I think that the, uh, community interacted, uh, with the exhibits that were presented there with the, uh, um, specialists that made presentations there and with, uh, council members that were there as well. Uh, and the, uh, city staff. So that was good. I think that, uh, uh, that specific plan for the transportation center is something that's going to, uh, be a tremendous, uh, influence on the future of the city. I think it's, uh, we're looking forward to that. I hope it's something that comes, that actually comes to fruition. And, uh, for both of the meetings that I went to. So then, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I did, uh, make it to the last minutes of the meeting at High Speed Rail. I actually got to talk to the, uh, consultants that were still there.
Did you get all the chairs put away?
Uh, I did try, but I got into a conversation with Mike Behan, who stayed a little later. Um, but it was, from what I understood, I felt into Mike and the consultants, very well-attended, uh, very well-received. Um, I also attended the funeral services, uh, for, uh, Mr. Parker, uh, the, uh, Hispanic Chamber luncheon today. Uh, the, uh, movies at the amphitheater, the concerts as well, uh, very popular. Uh, I think that we're really making a, uh, an improvement in having people attend and really enjoy, uh, the concerts as well as the movies. Um, looking forward to the next movie and the next concert. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. Um, so in addition, I was pretty much at everything that, uh, you guys, uh, are speaking about, the walk-on words. I think it's exciting that, uh, I'm watching the progress over at, uh, Carson Park. Um, the, um, residents inn, you know, um, I had my, I had to book it months out to get my mom in there when she was moving. And, uh, there's our families, uh, husbands and wives and stuff that have been living in that place for months, for months and months. And, uh, as we were, um, partaking in their afternoon, uh, little refreshment thing, we got a chance to talk to a number of them. And, uh, they're wanting, they wanna get out of there into something else. It was out at, uh, Yellen Park. It was a great event, by the way. Where is she, where she was at? That, uh, the canine pool thing over there. Buster's still not too sure about all them other dogs, but, uh, we're getting, we're, we're having fun out there. That was, that was very well-attended and I gotta hand it to the staff that's there, they, they're dog people. It's pretty clear that the people you got out there, they get it with the dogs and the volunteers, they got a chance to sit down and talk with them and, and, uh, they, they're all having fun out there with that. So, and that's really the key to making that positive, is, is everybody's just, is having fun with it. Uh, movie nights, the concert series issues, um, I went down to, um, the wild, they have, they had the wildfire meeting town hall. I got there a little late, caught the tail end of it. We're gonna be having another one, uh, up here, uh, next month, I believe. Uh, more specific to, um, our issues here in, uh, in the Anlo Valley. Santa Clarita's issues are a little bit different, just kind of they're, 'cause they're, they're a little more hemmed in by the, uh, by the hillsides up there. Was down at, uh, Sanitation District, uh, for their District Two meeting. I also, the, uh, general manager retired and I presented a, uh, um, nice certificate from the city on behalf of the entire council. I attended the City PAC event. It was very well-attended. You guys missed a great event out there in Oakland and you thought it was the next, next week. You were a week off. It was, it was, uh, very well-attended and, uh, it was, I'll tell you what, it was a class act. Uh, the, um, the music and the food and everything was just, it was all, we all got the ability to sit down and interact with a number of the, uh, uh, major players in helping to move legislation and helping to fund, uh, the efforts of cities to maintain local control. And it was important to reinforce those relationships with those major sponsors that are gonna be doing that. The music in the park, uh, the Civ Mill Dinner, again, that's a huge morale issue with the families when they have elected officials that come there and, you know, um, a lot of those, uh, military folks come from a wide variety of cities and it's a whole different environment with the elected officials there. When they find out they're just sitting at a table and the councilman for that area or the mayor is sitting there with his wife or your wife is sitting there and, uh, or our wives are talking about us or whatever. So all, it's, it's a, it's really good for that, that, that environment with that, with those, uh, with those military families.
Good to meet.
They just, they just sent me a, uh, invitation to officially, that I will be officially accepted if only I send them some money, so.
Yeah, I am a member of Civ Mill.
Yeah.
Have been for.
I'll be another member there probably tomorrow. North County, uh, North County Cities Meeting, we had down in Santa Clarita as a follow-up to our NCTC meeting. Again, reinforcing our, uh, our many facets of needs to serve the commuters, uh, uh, both on the road and on the rail uh, from the North County. I also, uh, was at the Metro Board meeting. I've had about five or six meetings in the last two weeks, um, in, in support of the, uh, county supervisor and, uh, the board, the Metro Board has approved, uh, some very dramatic improvements for the, uh, for MetroLink service. You know, I always tell you, it's, it was ninety minutes when we started that back in ninety-four. We stood out there in the asphalt after the earthquake and the train pulled up and they had to get stools out to get up in the train 'cause of platform. because the platform didn't reach and it took us ninety minutes then, and today it takes us an hour and a half. So we need to fix that train conflicts, but they want to get thirty-minute trains to Santa Clarita and then one hour headways to the Antelope Valley. It's not because the need isn't there, it just has to do with the tracking issues. And, uh, so these improvements will, will help provide matching funds, uh, provide shovel-ready projects and s- and start the process to, to make, make those improvements. Um, a bunch of SCAG meetings, as I said, um, the Missouri Park, Martina McBride. Um, so we, we did the, um, presentation of PIA's security and, uh, Mr. Messia. And, um, and we had the gentleman sitting here, the eighty-year-old gentleman that was on the verge of being killed by a crazed person and his life was saved. It was tragic that the attacker's life was lost. But when you got to make that choice, they, they, the gentleman made a swift and appropriate decision. And, uh, the, the gentleman sat here and was crying with us. It was, it was very, it was very moving, very moving event, I tell you. High Speed Rail. Alright, so tomorrow coffee with a cop, right? Over at Mitsubishi. Just a couple of upcoming things. Um, the Newcastle Disease, um, forum will be Thursday evening here at the Cultural Center. Everything you ever wanted to know about Newcastle Disease, uh, fair parade on Saturday. And Saturday evening, if you like ABBA, you will love Bior again. So, uh, and then tons of other meetings that will bore you to death. Mr. City Manager.
At the interest of time, I will shorten my list. Um, on July tenth, went to Salt Lake City to look at the digester project up there, uh, for anaerobic digestion, creating, using that to create energy, to create gas. Uh, very interesting project, completely different than the project we went to a couple of weeks before in San Luis Obispo. Um, some of the other meetings have already been covered. Went to the Queen Nation Concerts, um, for our concerts. So far this year, including the fireworks show, we've had over sixteen thousand attendees and we've grossed over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, between the ticket and food sales and alcohol sales. Um, so that's, we're doing really well this year and hopefully pile it into next year and, and continue up in our game as far as the groups that we bring in. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, had a meeting with Extreme Makeover Home Edition folks. Uh, that project's moving full speed ahead. Uh, we're looking at a start date in the end of August and the project being a six-day project to complete, complete two units. Uh, can't really talk much about where or anything yet. Um, we've worked under a, a non-disclosure, but, uh, it is going to happen in Palmdale. It will happen this month. So that's, that's excellent. And we'll keep the council posted and, uh, all the events pre, during and post, uh, to make sure everybody's got a.
And we're at the Hispanic Chamber Luncheon, it was mentioned, and people took it very well. I mean, the room was packed and everybody was excited about this project.
It's, it's pretty exciting. It's really, it's gonna, i- i- it's just a national view of Palmdale and pro-Palmdale, pro-veterans, pro the volunteerism and things that we have here. So it's really going to showcase the best of what we do. Uh, so I'm really looking forward to that. Um, National Night Out on the thirtieth is a great turnout at Missouri. Uh, I know Steve was there. Uh, and I didn't run into anybody else. I think that was the only one I ran into, but, uh, was, it was very well attended, a lot of, uh, really good displays and interactive things for the kids. Um, at the end of the month, I went to, to Mammoth on vacation, but you can't take the city management out of the city manager. So I met with Dan Holler, the town manager in Mammoth, to see what's going on there. And there, it's just spectacular what's going to be happening in Mammoth. The Aspen Group, uh, has bought properties there and there's going to be some amazing growth.
Between them and, uh, Big Bear, they've, they've figured out this whole BID issue and TBID issue and it's starting to really pay off for them.
We talked a little bit about that and I couldn't believe the percentages, uh, when you add them all up, it's getting close to like twenty-three percent. Uh, and their, their TOT in Mammoth is twenty million. So that's what they run on.
Um, well, these, what their city, what these cities are figuring out is diversification of their activities and that's what's making it. And, um, we've got to figure out how to start getting, I mean, I was going through, I got another, uh, 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 festival and entertainment guide the other day. And it's like, there's a, there's a, it's like the edge of the world where the sea monsters are.
Yep.
Just right to Santa Clarita, just north of Santa Clarita. It's like the world ends, so.
Yeah, I mean, the week before we got there, the week before, last week in July, they were still skiing. The bike park was open and it was Blues-a-palooza that weekend with seven thousand people up for, for that, for brews and blues.
I just sent some information over from the Blues Festival coordinators.
Yeah.
To Kerry, and, uh, I know some people that have dealt with that group and they think that they, this community would benefit from a lot of people coming in for a Blues Festival here too.
I'm, I'm going to let Kerry recover from this year's concert series before I start talking to her about Blues next year or a festival. But, uh, but we're doing great this year. ABBA is going to be a, a really good, uh, finale for us. And, and so it's been a really, really great summer and staff has worked really hard to make it, uh, make it great for this community. Uh, and that's all I've got.
You've got to say something about the P three conference.
Okay. So P three conference, as Richard said, was, was excellent, really good training in all aspects of what a public-private partnership is. And, and our project is really going to be a P four because you throw in the partnership with the military. And, uh, actually the day after the P three conference, uh, we finished up on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, we were meeting with the Air Force to talk about, um, all of our needs and their needs to make sure whatever we're doing is compatible with the needs of Plan Forty-two. Um, the, some of the people we met with, uh, as far as being potential P three partners, uh, one group, the Carlisle Group, is the second largest corporation in the United States, uh, behind Walmart. And so I, I don't know where Amazon fits in there, but, um, uh, they were, are well-versed in airports, well-versed in P three and have a lot of money to back, back up what they want to do. And we met time and time again with really the top people in the industry that are out there building airports. We met with the company that built, uh, the airport at Payne Field, uh, where Boeing changed the, really a industrial airport for Boeing into a commercial airport. It was about a fifty-million-dollar project for developing the terminal. And it's, it's a spectacular terminal. Um, I think at some point we need to take, take a look in and go to Seattle and take a look at Payne Field, uh, to see what, uh, that's all about. And the developer of that project, uh, is coming to Palmdale to take a look at what we have and is very interested. Uh, so we're working with our consultants on putting together, uh, our next steps so that we can invite the top, uh, P three-type developers in to give us proposals on, uh, developing our terminal on our six hundred acres. Uh, so it's, it's a lot of self-determination now instead of being kind of subject to whatever the Air Force wanted. Uh, we're being on our own property with access to the runway is, is critical. And so we're working with the Air Force on joint use agreement, uh, probably be heading back to Ohio next month to have those discussions. And, uh, then we're working here locally to develop our master plan and attract, uh, the right airlines.
So what is the next step? Developing the master plan and then putting in RFP or what is the next step?
So, starting the EIR, once we have our master plan concepts laid out, which we're pretty close on, uh, then the environmental impact report is, uh, we got to kick that off. Um, we're considering what options we have in regard to funding that, you know, whether we fund it with the city funds, go after FAA money, which then brings a lot of federal strings to the project, or start working with a P three, e- even at this point to fund the environmental impact report. So there's some trade-offs. We're, we're talking those over. We even, we had a discussion this morning about that. Um, and so that's really our, our next step is to get, uh, kind of everything lined up, our master plan, our feasibility study. Uh, we've got drafts of those being reviewed right now and that will inform the envi- environmental work that needs to be done as far as traffic and those kind of things. So we're, we're right there. Uh, we'll be bringing forward our workshop in November. Um, the entire package with a critical path of how we move forward, how we phase this thing as far as development. So we can get the airport up and, in operation as soon as possible with a goal of having permanent facilities, maybe the year, year after.
You're just going to put a master EIR on a whole parcel?
Yes.
So it will facilitate the development of East Carolina, so you don't have to keep chipping away at that?
We will do that. Um, you know, the focus on the air, we've already got an environmental impact report. I think we're going to replace that whole thing because it's based on the prior general plan EIR, which is a little bit dated. Uh, so we want to make sure that we have the most up-to-date. Um, we don't know what, and we've got proposals of what people would like to develop there, but we don't have a master plan yet of the entire six hundred acres and absorption and things like that.
Detail is required in order to provide that, uh, into a, uh, EIR though?
I think you're getting into Mark's realm at this point, but.
I think he just, I think he just drop kicked.
Yeah, I just, just woke him up. So the, I, I think the important components are really traffic noise. I mean, the typical things that, that will be an environmental impact, uh, and that really depends on the level of, uh, office, commercial, industrial, retail, hotel that goes into that, that space.
What we need is a conceptual, uh, master plan, uh, that basically lays out the land uses and the areas that will have the land uses. So it'll be sort of like a program EIR, uh, and then as each project comes in, they will do a smaller environmental document specific to each project. So in order to have an overall, uh, you know, environmental clearance, then what we need is a conceptual, uh, land use plan.
And, and we've spoke to P threes that, hey, we'll take the whole six hundred acres and we'll build the whole thing out and we'll build your terminal for you and, and hand it over.
Thanks, Mark.
To, um, ones that are just interested in the terminal space and, you know, not really interested in, in the rest of it. And so we, we can look at the whole gamut and, and get the best thing that works for us.
So given, given past experiences with our neighbor to the north, are we talking to them so that we can, uh, not have.
Comes out of the hat.
Not have them trying to stop that development? Uh, are they?
And why would they do that?
Well, again, based on past experiences, I think it's advantageous to, for us to have that conversation.
I think, I think we have in general, uh, except for some occasional glitches. Um, I, I think in general, we have a, a, a better dialogue going now.
Yeah, and we, we've had some of those discussions. So once we get to a point where we've at least got the, the draft documents ready.
Huge benefit to them as well.
Absolutely, because it's right on the border and so north of them is, is Lancaster. And so, uh, if people start thinking about what happens around airports and, and kind of the master planned areas, um, it, it'll be really a good thing for the entire AV certainly. Uh, the, uh, the next step, I think for us is to, once we put our master plan together, at least get the draft together and have our numbers and everything solid, is to go to NCTC, get on the agenda. Because that's really the transportation agency for the entire area. And I think that's where we can put that information out and do a report there.
And then you mentioned, I was going to suggest that we can put an item on NCTC so that we can at least, you know, start that conversation with them and they don't come back telling us that we never told them about it.
Right.
And they get upset and they do what they might do.
I just want it fleshed out enough that we can answer questions and so forth and not be too early, but not be too late either.
Okay.
Uh, the Payne Field project, uh, near Seattle has a lot of parallels to what we have here in Antelope Valley in terms of making our project successful.
Setteino de Siqua.
Yeah, they have week one or whatever. Um, the, the Payne Field project was really developed because Boeing, uh, employees and all their suppliers and so forth were having such a problem. It was two and a half hour commute to Sea-Tac. And so the idea was, hey, if we build something near where all of our employment is, that it'll be an economic boost. And, um, they, like us, were figuring maybe forty thousand, uh, trips per year. They're on pace right now for four hundred thousand in the first year. They're about four months into, into operation right now.
That's just from the, uh, employees of, uh, those facilities?
It's employees and then other businesses. There's some Japanese companies and so forth that actually moved there because now, uh, they could be located close to their supply chain business and their employees didn't have to drive two and a half hours to the airport.
Which is what we have with.
Which is exactly what we've got right now.
So it's similar in several ways. It's similar to what we have here.
Yeah, an existing runway, just build a terminal, two and a half hour trip to the, to major airport. So very similar. Uh, they run twenty-four flights a day, uh, eighteen Alaska and six United. Um, quite a diverse, and they're, and they're going east as well, east and south, but, uh, they're going to Denver and, and other locations. So it's, um, it, it similarities are kind of uncanny. And so when we had that discussion with the developer, uh, he was very interested in coming down to Palmdale and, and kind of mapping things out in his own mind.
Good. Thank you. I thought you had something to say about that.
With a little prompting. It's a little late. Yeah.
All right, and then we're about a minute before we have to officially close the meeting. So, or through hoops, uh, come back tomorrow. Um, any specific, uh, uh, future requests for discussion items or anything like that?
In a minute, I have to request. Um, one of them, I, uh, expressed to staff and I spoke with the mayor about us being able to know what the next step is going to be and us, uh, spending or using some of the money for the part development.
Can we get some briefing set up for that?
Maybe we can get a briefing because the mayor tells me that staff's already working on what the next step is, and I just don't know what they are. Um, and I think that, uh, because.
Still get on the same page on this.
Yeah, so if we can get a memo or something that tells, keeps us all informed of what the next step is. I just don't want to wait five, six months for Prop sixty-eight. I know we have good, uh, um, chances of getting those grants, but then I guarantee. And if we were able to get some of the engineering or design for those, uh, concepts, uh, we may be able to get ahead and be ready when those grants are announced. Um, so if we can get a, a briefing.
We'll put a timeline together. I mean, then our next steps, uh, we're not sitting out waiting for the Prop sixty-eight money to show up. What we're doing is we'll be moving into design and construction drawings and so forth. After we've, we've taken those conceptual drawings now, we'll take those forward, make those into biddable drawings. So regardless of whether we have, uh, Prop sixty-eight funds or not, we'll be at that shovel-ready point where we can put things out to bid.
Okay.
Let's, let's just get.
But we'll get a timeline together to lay all that out.
Another one is I've noticed that we, uh, don't do proclamations to celebrate, say, African-American month in February or a spawning month coming up in, uh, September. So I wanted to see the council would, uh, consider, uh, presenting a proclamation, not only for those two, uh, uh, months, but, uh, for several other things that, uh, I think are important for us to recognize throughout the community.
Somebody just says, tells us about this stuff because I think, uh, you know, you have, you have a month or a day or something that, for all kinds of concepts. So if somebody just says something, it's not a big deal. We can have those things produced.
Yeah.
They just, they just get us some wording suggested. It's easy.
About six months ago, I think I sent the mayor a list of about, I think it was seventy-five different proclamations that other cities do.
That's all we ask the community. If it's important to you, come tell us and we'll, we'll work on it, you know?
Okay.
But I don't want to just start plucking them off the, uh.
No, I know, but, um, again, it's just a thing that we should be able to recognize those special, um, events that happen throughout the year. And there's always a, a day for something.
Yeah.
But these are, uh, things that really, um, tell us the type of, uh, community that we have and we recognize those type of events.
I can, I can pull a list together and then, um, certainly circulate it among the council to see.
Yeah.
Uh, what's important, uh, internally and then we can also.
I think especially if there's a group that can help represent that topic for us.
That, that's part of it is you do a proclamation, who you're presenting it to. And so a lot, a lot of times people will come to us.
We got old cabinet folk.
It'll be a week after the month of whatever. And so that's, uh, that's part of it.
And real quick before we go, I know we, we talked about.
Ready at public.
We talked about turning that, that second workshop into a council meeting or to a, like, a light council meeting, not fully staffed. I, I didn't see it on the agenda.
I have a memo ready to go to the council on that. It just didn't get out today.
We're already doing that, aren't we? What are we not doing?
I think it was just.
We're not doing, is going home.
Yeah.
We'll wait for that memo to come.
Okay.
Very quickly, I'd like us to make sure we take a look at, I brought the topic up earlier about a PD lockbox or gate switch, uh, on our, uh, similar to what the fire department requires at all these buildings. Way too many buildings that I'm going out on when I'm doing ride-alongs, got the gates removed, uh, because cops can't get in there. I'd like us to see us look at an ordinance on that and also to make it retroactive, like give them a period of time. I'd like us to see, is look at an ordinance on that and also to make it retroactive, but give them a period of time to do that. Um, it can, it can be a box or it could be a key. And then that, that secure key is in each patrol car, just like it is for the fire department. Um, because it doesn't do any good to call the cops if they can't get in. Also, um, we discussed earlier about some, um, code enforcement issues and about our ability to get out considering some of the recent events across the nation. Um, I am constantly running into businesses that, out of concern for their, um, security issues, that they're exiting. They, they are installing battery-operated delayed egress systems, which are completely illegal, okay? Uh, they don't have any remote release. You have to sit there, somebody's shooting at you. Invite anybody to hold your breath for fifteen minutes after you run. At fifteen seconds while you're waiting for a door to open. Doesn't, it, it, it's, it's not practical. Um, and just making sure that our building is safety and in our discussions, he bailed out on me, so I can't catch him. But I mentioned it to Sully the other day, Chief Sullivan, that's got to be a priority. If the building is falling down, burning down, or being shot up, if you can get out, your chances of survival are a lot better than if you're trapped at a door. So that, that needs to be a priority. There's way too many people that are trapped in buildings, uh, unnecessarily. So I'd like us to take a look at what's necessary for both those two items. So, alright. If nothing else.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn? Thank you, sir. Okay.